Okay. Let's call it to order. City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember, Agency Director Mann?
Present.
Marcus?
Here.
Cilio?
Is here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith?
Here.
Mayor Chairman Perez?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And we have Reverend Forte from the Growing Valley Baptist Church who will lead us in the invocation. At least I hope we have. Yes.
Shall we pray? He trite God our Father, Maker, ruler of heaven and earth. We gather here this evening to do a work that need to be done. And to do a good work for you, you have to be on card. We pray that you will give us one mind, one understanding, and a will to make it easy for the people that have to carry this work out. Bless us, let us be thankful, let us speak after we have thought, and give us grace to say the things that mean life, blessings. Keep us in your will and your way. We will give you holy praises, for we ask it all in his precious and glorious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend. Councilman Mann, you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Everyone face the flag, put your hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And now we have Councilwoman Marcus.
It's Matthew Ramirez here. Matthew, do you want to come on up please? You'll use my microphone. Matthew is 13 years old, is in 7th grade at Desert Christian, and he's here to speak to us tonight.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Ramirez, and today my subject is "Thank You." First of all, on behalf of our U-trading class, I wish to say thank you to the City Council for giving our members the opportunity of speaking before a group. It is said that the most common fear in America is to fear of speaking before a group. Surely, most of you here can look back and remember such a fear. Mayor Perez, you are experienced attorney and see very much at ease before this council, but my guess is, is that you can recall the early days of your training when you are not so comfortable of speaking before a group. Our training class works mainly with young people from the 8- to 12-year-old age group. There is a boldness and adventurous spirit which seems to disappear in the self-conscious teen years. It is a tremendous advantage to be able to overcome stage fright early before it overcomes us. Mainly, our speaking is done in a church setting among a number of friends and family members. It is helpful, of course, to have such a support group. Speaking today in a setting just as this, adds a new and helpful dimension to our learning process. We look forward to future visits here, as long as you leave the welcome out for us. Hopefully, it will be something worth hearing, but today, the message is one of appreciation. Thank you.
I'm still terrified, I just learned how to fake it. Okay, now we have the athletes of the month, and this is the first time that we have a woman getting the award, which makes me wonder, Mr. City Manager, how is that possible? We saw an error and corrected it, and I hope it's corrected every month from now on. Melissa, do you want to come up? Melissa is obviously from Paraclete High School, and we have a few other folks from Paraclete here tonight. She competes in cross-country, soccer, and track and field teams. She finished first in the Southern Section Division 4 individual race as a freshman. Who do you know?
Seventh.
Oh, you're already winning awards. This is great. You sure you don't win at Lancaster High School? She went on to finish 7th in the state championship, and she placed first among freshman runners. So you were 7th amongst, ahead of older people too? Or was it? Okay, great. This season, Melissa again qualified for the state championships where she finished 4th, and so I guess we know what she's going to do next year. She was named the Valley Press Female Runner for 2008. She holds the 1600, the 3200 meter track and field records for Paraclete, both set as a freshman last season. She plays varsity soccer for Paraclete, club soccer for Thunder Soccer Club. What do you play? What position?
Um, quarterback.
Yeah? That's great. But this is the great part. This is really the great part. What's your great point?
4.1.
4.1. I mean, that is truly remarkable. You can imagine the hours and hours she spends working. And, but you get the first new proclamation. Is that beautiful or what? I'm very proud of this. In fact, I mean, look how beautiful that is. I wanted something more beautiful than the county. I think we got it. But Ron Smith, Councilman Smith, is the one who did the artwork on this. I mean, that really is great art, and he wanted to tell us something about this particular seal. Why don't you tell us?
Really, it was Davis Communications that did the majority of it, and I did a few tweaks on it being an artist, and the one thing that's been a pet peeve of mine in the valley is every time you see a logo with an African gazelle on it rather than our pronghorn in the United States, and so this actually has a pronghorn on it.
A real antelope. So when you go to the mall, remind those people that that is a gazelle, not an antelope. Here you go. Thank you. Good thought of you. Wait a minute, you've got to give a speech. No, I'm kidding. Pedro Zargosa? Now, you go to Lancaster, right?
Okay.
Pedro Zargosa runs track and cross-country at Lancaster High School where he went undefeated this season and won the Golden Lake Cross Country Championship. That's incredible. That's hard. I bet you don't smoke, do you? He was named All-CIF Cross Country Team on Division 1, doing part 2 as placing 6th in the Division 1 Finals. Pedro qualified for the CIF State Championships where he finished a respectable 26th. Pedro was named 2008 Valley Press Male Runner of the Year. He runs 70 miles each week, and was credited with sparking an increased interest in cross-running in the Antelope Valley. You should come walk with the mayor with us, you know. 70 miles a week, my gosh. He's being recruited by UC Riverside, UC Santa Barbara, Cal State Long Beach, San Jose State, and Loyola. You know, I went to UC Santa Barbara. It's a great school. You really should consider that. But why are they recruiting him? He has a 3.8 GPA, and he volunteers weekly at Central Christian Church Nursery on top of it. I mean, not only is he a tremendous athlete, a tremendous student, he's also, there's a gentleness about him that I think is really a example for everyone to follow, and I'm really proud to give this to you. Thank you. I need you to come down and do the courtill. Now, the city manager begged me. It was really disgusting to watch, too. I mean, he wasn't quite on his knees, but he was there, because he went to Paraclete. And so he asked me if he could give the award to the Paraclete High School football team who have accomplished something truly wonderful. One of the things that make this so wonderful is that Palmdale's never done it, and... You know, we have two high schools in Lancaster who both were at the very pinnacle, the top. That's not an accident. You know, it's not an accident that both those teams, that this happens in the same year. We've got this incredible energy in this city that, you know, we get so caught up in the negative stuff that we never really appreciate or celebrate the magnificent, magnificent kids that are in this community that are working hard every single day, and they clearly are the majority, not the minority. And Mr. Brazigian, why don't you come do this? And then Councilman Ron Smith is going to do Court Hill High School, because he wanted in on it too, which is fair.
Well, it wasn't quite on my knees, but this is really important to me. When my job and sports coincide, I'm very happy, but when my job and Paraclete and sports on a static. So I'd like to invite down Coach Norm Dahlia and the captains for the Paraclete Football Team. What we're going to do after this is we're going to give Court Hill their award, and then we're going to ask all the captains, all the coaches to come down for a picture together, and then we're going to ask both teams to come down as well for a picture together as well, too. So we'll start with the Paraclete High School captains.
It is truly an honor for me to do this, because this team really overcame adversity. They overcame losing their first three games of the season to win the next 11 games and capture the title. After giving up 96 points in the first three games, Paraclete's defense came up big. They only allowed 83 points in the rest of the season, 11 games, only 83 points. Their offense responded by scoring an average of 33 points a game, with running back Brandon Butane rushing for over 2,100 yards in the season. In the championship game, Paraclete's defense faced a Rosemeade team that had averaged 35 points a game. They held Rosemeade to only 10 points in a 21-10 victory. This is Paraclete's seventh football championship, and their first since winning five in a row in 2000, in 97 to 2001. Paraclete was led by the Valley Press Player of the Year, Brandon Butane, who rushed for over 2,100 yards. Defensive Player of the Year, Todd Davis, is over here. First team All-Vally Players, Brandon Owen, Kyle Swanson, and Johnny Torresney. Then I'm going to ask Coach Norm Dahlia to talk about some other awards that they won, too. This team truly was a remarkable team to watch. It makes me so proud that both Court Hill High School and Paraclete High School are in the city of Lancaster, and what both accomplished. I can't say enough of how much and how much fun it was to watch these games. I was at almost every one, and this team never gave up and always found a way to win. This is, of all the years, 35 I've been watching Paraclete football, this was the most resilient team I have ever seen. Coach?
You should say one more thing. Wasn't it something that you gave up to see one of these games also? Something that you never missed since, I think, almost college? You'll have to tell them that.
It was, well, it was a USC football game, which I never miss, and I have to. And since we're going to talk about personal, there is one thing that is personal to me. In the early '70s, when I got to Paraclete, I looked at the trophy case, and I told all my friends I was popping off. I said, "I'll be in that trophy case someday." Then I realized I was the worst athlete in the class of 1976, so I realized I was going to have to do another way. Well, 35 years later, at the bottom of this plaque is my name. If Margaret's here, I want to make sure it goes in the trophy case, and my next reunion is going to be really fun.
Norm, if you can talk about some of the other state honors and such.
Oh, thank you very much, Mark, and...
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Council.
And with Coach Trennan back there from Court Hill, I have to let everybody know our defense only gave up three points in the final game. Our offense gave up seven. So, yes, they shut them out, we allowed three points, but we'll accept the victory. Yes, we had 14 young men make All-League, All-Olympic League, seven first team, seven second team. Brandon Butane was the Offensive Player of the Year. Todd Davis was the Defensive Player of the Year in the Olympic League, and Brandon Owen was the Lineman of the Year. Dante Donato and AJ Culver were first team All-League offense, and, boy, then it just goes down the list. Kyle Swanson, Johnny Torresney, I mean, we just had a great time, great year. And then we went to the All-CIF meeting. We had eight All-CIF athletes, with Brandon Butane being the co-Offensive Player of the Year. Kyle Swanson, our outside linebacker, was the Defensive Player of the Year, and it was the first time in a couple of years that I've been there that every coach put Kyle at the top of the list. There was no question whatsoever who the Defensive Player of the Year was. Todd Davis, first team defense. This is his second year. He's only a junior. As a sophomore, he was All-CIF, and also now, as a junior, he was All-CIF. Andrew Culver, AJ, was first team, or we only have first team, I'm sorry, but was All-CIF for his second year in a row. And as you can tell, AJ broke his wrist in the first play, in the first game of the playoffs, sat out two games, and just couldn't take it anymore, cast it up, and played in the final game. Johnny Torresney, defensive back. Help me out, guys. I know it's not all you. Levante Barnett as a sophomore, defensive end. Our kicker, Kyle Steffes, was also All-League, All-CIF. And the greatest, Justin Vargas, All-League, he's sitting up there, I'm looking around in the crowd. The greatest experience was Max Preps had picked four of our young men this year to be All-State. Kyle Swanson, Todd Davis, Brandon Butane, and Kyle Steffes were voted Max Preps All-State Team.
Thank you, Norm.
Thanks, Mark.
They also have a great coach, too, and it's a coach who can befriend the players, but they listen to, believe me, they listen to him when he raises his voice. Right, guys?
So thank you. We're going to ask if you can get a picture of these folks, and then, actually, why don't we have the whole team coming down when you have, after they take a picture of this, and we'll get the Paraclete team? Okay.
Hey, come on in the picture. Come on. You might actually get your face in the trophy case.
Come on. It'll be more than I could ever hope for.
Why don't you book in, okay?
Good.
Okay.
Okay, if we can have the rest of the team come up? Oh, I'm sorry.
Are they all there? You know, I want to apologize to everybody, but the city manager left something out. Who was the Coach of the Year?
Could we have the coaches and the captains for Court Hill High School come on down?
Before they come down, do you want to stick your initial on this?
No. You know, as Mark said, and the mayor said too, I mean, it's exciting. Anybody, any city would be very excited to have one of these teams, but for us to have two, it's quite an honor. So it's an honor to give Court Hill High School Football Team was the CIF Southern Section Western Division Championship. Court Hill was coached to the championship by the Coach of the Year, Pat Dignan, who also played quarterbacks for CIF champion St. Paul's of San Pedro in 1972. Incidentally, Pat coached at St. Paul's, subsequently became the winningest coach in California history. The team finished with a record of 13-1 and defeated Miracosa 14-0 in the championship game. Court Hill is the first football champion from the Golden League since 1994. This victory represents Court Hill's first football championship in their history. The defense came up big in the final game, holding Miracosa to only 82 yards rushing and 11 yards passing, well below their season average. Court Hill was led by the Valley Press Offensive Player of the Year, Kyle Brooks, and first team All-Vally Players, Isaiah Culver, Cameron Knapp, and Kyle Bly. Court Hill's determination was exemplified by the quarterback, Josh Firm, who played the championship game with a broken leg, suffered in the semifinal game the previous week. So both teams have a broken bone in common here. So let's give a big applause.
I just want to get one thing straight. I played for the winningest coach in California history. His name was Marion Ansich, and I was fortunate enough to have lunch with him a week ago, and he would be very upset if I took credit for his 313 wins in the Southern Section. Before I talk a little bit about our kids, we brought, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, we brought you a little token of our appreciation.
Thank you.
You'll see some of our kids wearing these shirts around. I figured you're a pretty big man, so we got you a double X.
That's the right size. Thank you.
I want to thank the council and members of the board for asking us here. I know our superintendent is up here, Mr. Vieira, our principal, Karen Parker, and some of my coaches. The All-CIF meetings are tomorrow for our division. They got snowed out a couple, two, three, four weeks ago, so we don't know exactly who our All-CIF players are yet, but we have a bunch of them in line to get the awards, so hopefully we'll come home with some more awards. In our area, we had, in our league, seven guys made first team All-Golden League, six guys made second team All-Golden League, and we also had the kicker of the year in the Golden League, who was Cole Wazner. I don't know if Cole's here tonight or not. Also, one of our captains is not here. Isaiah Culver was a stalwart on our defense and our offense all year, and he is on the basketball team. They are playing Pete Knight tonight, so I, you know, I told him, "No, let's not make an issue with the basketball coach, you have an obligation to the basketball team." So he's on the basketball court tonight. I want to commend Paraclete for their championship. Once again, having two in this area in the same year, you might want to mark the calendar, because we don't know if that's ever going to happen again.
But congratulations to, to Periclee. But I used to be a tennis player, and they had a term in tennis called getting bagelled. Anybody that plays tennis knows what that is, and I know your offense gave up most of the points. But our defense, coached by Coach Drennan, a bagel is a bagel is a bagel. And that zero still stands. So, I just, I want to thank the coaches and the players and, and everybody for asking us here tonight. We're very honored to have gotten the championship and brought it to the Valley. I know Periclee, they got to build another wall to put their trophies up, and ours has been bare for a long time, and now it's got something to put on it. So, thank you very much.
Can we get the school board to come down? Let's get a picture with the group. We got Mr. Lot, we got Mr. Durico, who else is here? Is Ira here? Ira, you got buried in the crowd. Come on down. And then we'll have the rest of the team come down, and we'll do that also. That's great. Get, get it with guys. Come on.
Thank you.
Okay, tell them, come on, come on out. Tell them, tell, tell them, tell, let's, tell them how it's genetic. You know, you know how us old guys are always trying to take credit? Go ahead, tell them who.
I, I didn't want to take credit, that's why I didn't say, but Isaiah Culver's my...
But he whispered it to me. He was taking credit. And Mr. Durico?
Isaiah Culver's my grandson.
It's genetic.
What? Ellen, your daughter's one of the coaches.
And my daughter's one of the coaches. See, all three of us have big breasts.
Ready, guys, right here? One, two, three. One more.
If you guys stay up for a second, Periclee, if you want to come down, we're going to take your picture of the both teams in there, if we can fit you all in here.
All right, no fighting now. Better woman coach. Is that kind of...
And their academic advisor.
Oh, I see. Okay. Wow, what a great idea.
Football wrestling, basketball.
Does every school do that?
Nope. It's something I started about ten years ago.
We got to talk about that.
Back, back.
Ruth Simons.
And everybody's going to have to squeeze it.
Bad daughter, no?
Daughter. All right, not that young.
Yeah, put the coaches in there, you know. Can, can front row, can front row take me? No, hey, coaches, coaches.
That ain't going to happen.
Front row, yo, front row.
Let's fill in, um, fill in that space right there. Somebody a little bit taller, yeah, right, right behind Coach there.
We need layers, serious. Because we can't see everybody. I don't care. Work it out.
I guess more people will have a picture of you, what? Will you invite them down?
Okay, guys, ready? One, two, three, right here? And Ron, you're still going to guess. There we go. Okay, guys, ready? One, two, three. One more.
Go ahead. Yes, go ahead. There we go.
One more.
All right, one, two, three, three, four.
Please stay there for one, please stay there for one second. One thing that Coach Dahlia wanted me to mention, and I thought was amazing, I had the pleasure of going to both games, the night before Periclee was going to play for the championship, they were there en masse in their Lederman's jackets rooting on Cortez for the championship. And the night after, when Periclee was playing, Cortez, instead of out celebrating, was there en masse supporting Periclee, and that was beautiful to see, so thank you. Okay. Come with me. Come with me. Thank you. Wait a minute, wait a minute. You know, I just found out something truly remarkable. This is Ira's daughter, Ruth Simons.
Is that the remarkable part?
That probably is remarkable. And she's the coach. But what does she the coach of? She's the coach of the academics. They actually have an academic coach for the athletic teams. That is truly remarkable. And, Mr. Mayor, before I, before I leave, I forgot to do this for my wife, since she's in charge of this. Periclee High School is going to honor the City of Lancaster at our Night of Extreme Cuisine, Sunday, March eighth, at five o'clock. Thank you. You know, you, you guys have launched the year. This is the year Lancaster is going to kick some major butt in this, this country, actually. We are doing remarkable things, and you've started us off in that direction. I think we're all going to be really proud of this year. And with that, Councilwoman Marcus, if you would come down and join me, and bring your, bring your cheat sheet, so you know what to say. If, you remember that not too long ago, the election was going on, and we were talking about Section Eight, and what Section Eight was doing with the community, and how we were going to engage this situation? And Councilwoman Marcus took, took that role and that responsibility. And tonight, we have the deputies and the investigators and the Section Eight people who are really making an incredible difference, in that they're making people be accountable when they, when they enter this program, that they follow all of the rules. And we've seen that in the paper, week after week, that they've, they are doing things in this city that have never been done anywhere else in the country. And that really is part of your, of what you've done and what you've accomplished and what they've accomplished. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to you. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor Paris. I know mainly, having been one of the citizens that sat out here almost two years ago and asked for help in this area, because we felt like the citizens weren't the ones who were being looked after. We have seen great things happen already, and there's going to be more to be done. But I believe what I'm doing is actually, um, let's see. Section Eight compliance checks net seven arrests. Deputies from Lancaster share stations, cops and corps teams, along with officers from California State Parole, LA County Probation, LA County Housing Authority, and Lancaster City Code Enforcement conducted several Section Eight compliance checks within the City of Lancaster on December fourth, two thousand and eight, which was my birthday. Thank you very much. Their efforts resulted in the arrest of seven suspects and recovery of illegal narcotics, cash, and weapons. Those compliance checks also resulted in child endangerment charges, bringing assistance to minors located in unhealthy environments. The compliance check operation was extremely successful in discovering not only violations of Section Eight compliance, but a variety of other criminal offenses as well. These teams did exemplary job and are to be commended for their participation in this operation, as well as their ongoing dedication to serving the citizens of our community. And I believe that Mr. Lee Durico and Bob Nishimura are going to help give these awards out.
Yes, come on down, help us out.
And they're with, they're investigators with the LA County, and we sure do appreciate their help. And one last thing is, I've noticed that there are more and more citizens that are stepping up and getting involved and not afraid to be involved, to even help, um, help our deputies, so I appreciate that. Citizens are doing a great job.
Let me interject a little bit. What we're actually seeing is people who are incredibly afraid doing it anyway. I mean, the, the level of courage that the citizens seem to be demonstrating in this community, we, just last week, we had citizens come to the aid of a, of a deputy. But what I'm seeing in, in this city, and I think what all of you are seeing also, is that people are finally getting engaged, that we're, we're recognizing this is all of our city, and we have to be accountable to each other, and it's becoming a much better place to live as a result. And you make our job a whole lot easier. And Bob and Lee, you want to...
On behalf of the Housing Authority, I'd like to thank the City of Lancaster, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Marcus, and the Sheriff's Department, Code Enforcement, Parole, and everybody else. We sure couldn't do this without the cooperation of everyone. We only have two guys dedicated to the City of Lancaster, but as you can see, with all the extra deputies, parole, probation, and your city staff, we have a lot more eyes paying attention. And again, we, we couldn't do this, and you guys have the greatest sheriff station in the county.
And if we could have all the sheriffs come down and all the investigators come down?
I, I think I just want to expand on what Bob said. You know, our relationship, the two investigators that are assigned to, they work out of the Lancaster station, they are contracted by the City of Lancaster in a joint contract with Supervisor Antonovich. And that's been that the city's recognized the effort that needs to be made in the community to deal with these issues. And I just want to introduce the investigators real quick, and then maybe the Sheriff's Department, we can bring them up to introduce our personnel. But your two investigators for Lancaster are dedicated to your city, is Alan Mullins and John O'Neil. And this is Chantel Jackson. She's an analyst that is also contracted through the City of Lancaster and Superv- the Supervisor's office, and she provides the support and the follow-up on our things. And I think one thing that, just to bring out, just from working in community programs, and I'm a local kid, and I'm from the Sheriff's Department now that works for Housing, we have such a level of cooperation with agencies here, and, and the interaction that is, that is maintained here on such a superior level compared to other places in the county is really kind of shocking. I think we all take it for granted, because we all work together daily here, everyone in this room. I've had an opportunity to work with them, and the level of professionalism, the, the attention to duty, and the, and the, the support of the community is, is really something special here in Lancaster. So, I think we need to commend our community for all of us taking an active role that here. Norm Hickling's here also. Norm Hickling from Supervisor Antonovich's office. Norm is a huge supporter of the things that we're doing here involving the housing programs.
We, we want to make certain we get a picture of this, because all of these people that think they're going to come up to Lancaster and victimize it, we have some folks waiting for you. Come on up. Thank you. You have, you have made us all incredibly safer. We, we, I mean, I think you guys recognize what a different city in just six months that you've accomplished. I, I can't tell you the difference in the emails that I'm getting, the difference in the phone calls I'm getting. People are, are happy to live here, and that's been a while coming. And it really is because of what you guys are doing. Thank you. You know, these guys aren't huggy guys, you know? Let's get, let's get a group shot. Come on. And, Mr. Durico, would you make certain everybody gets these?
Yes, very many.
We might want to hold one up.
Yes.
You get to hold it. Okay. And I get to stand here. Thank you. Liz, where, where have you been? I mean, you're like my Nana, for heaven's sakes. Come on. I told you, she's like Nana, right? Hey, you guys are changing the world. Get in and get a picture of us.
I'll just shoot it.
Yeah, good idea.
All right, here we go. One, two. One, two. One, two, big smile. All right.
Great. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks.
Can I say one more thing? You know, kudos to Periclee and Cortez Hill. All those stats, they were wasted on me, but I appreciate them. But these are my heroes. These are the ones that are out there doing every day for our citizens, and they're doing wonderful things, and it's, it's hard to put in words what they've done. And I appreciate them, I appreciate our citizens, but these guys are the ones that are out there every single day putting their life on the lines for us, and they are my heroes. Thank you so much, every one of you.
Okay. All of you who want to stay, we're welcome to have you stay. Have a seat, everybody wants to. Everybody who wants to go home to their family, it's okay with us. And I will go as quick as I can, so the rest of us can go home to our families. Oh, wait a minute, we have the pit bull ordinance tonight. Could about five of you stay? Okay. City Manager, anything to be removed from the agency?
No, sir.
Thank you. There are no items to be removed on the agency consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the agency's consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. We'll now hear a staff report regarding RBF One from Housing Director Elizabeth Brubaker. You know, Liz, I was talking to the city manager about you today. He says you're actually a softie. Is that true?
Yes, I am. Can't you tell?
I have feelings. Good evening, Mayor Paris and City Council members. RBF will be doing a presentation on the Paiute Neighborhood Master Vision Plan, which is a revision of one of the neighborhoods within the approved Northeast Gateway Corridors project area. Staff is requesting that the agency board concur with the Paiute Neighborhood Vision Master Plan and permit staff to continue with the planning, environmental, and redevelopment processes necessary to implement and complete the neighborhood plan. The primary objectives of doing neighborhood vision plans is to, is to assist staff in being more successful in applying for grants and obtaining additional monies to do redevelopment. It also allows staff to be more effective in budgeting agency funds and meeting state, housing, and community development requirements. In addition, it promotes private industry participation in redevelopment projects by prov- project covered approximately four square miles, which is a large area for the purposes of redevelopment and neighborhood revitalization. And for redevelopment and neighborhood revitalization to be effective, the area needed to be broken down into smaller sections. In addition, the Housing Needs Assessment was completed, and the Paiute area was identified as a primary focus neighborhood, one that exhibits all of the key indicators of a distressed neighborhood in need of revitalization. The Housing Needs Assessment provided a snapshot of issues and activities that would require more in-depth analysis to address issues, opportunities, and constraints for potential revitalization activities. RBF Consulting continued with the in-depth study and analysis, meeting with pertinent staff members from various departments and agencies to receive input and discuss what issues, opportunities, and constraints were in the Paiute neighborhood, and what physical changes could be done to revitalize the subject area. RBF Consulting did an outstanding job of capturing all of the party's desires, wants, and needs for the subject master plan, and now will present that to you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I'm Bob Klechner with RBF Consulting. And this graphic up here is really what started the Paiute neighborhood, I think as Elizabeth just mentioned, Northeast Gateway's Corridors Original Vision Plan. And the Paiute neighborhood, as she identified, is within that vision plan, just for a little bit of context, which goes from, actually from about Challenger Avenue on the east, Division on the west, Avenue H8 on the north, and Avenue I on the south. And I'll just briefly run through this. It's a large presentation. I will be a little bit brief, and if you have questions, feel free to ask me. I just don't want it to drag on too long and bore you, so stop me if I'm going too fast. The context, as Elizabeth may have just said, the basic thing is to keep this neighborhood safe. We want a safe neighborhood. We want, there are improvements taking place, such as the Antelope Valley Fairgrounds site has been removed, and the new Lancaster youth ball field. So there's lots of positive things happening in this neighborhood as well. We will focus on some of the circulation issues as related to current improvements. We will touch on drainage issues that are currently, there are some problems with drainage. Neighborhood connections, given that the youth ball fields is going in, and a few other developments are going in, and there's infill development that's going to happen, we know there's a need for greater pedestrian and traffic connections within this neighborhood. We will also address some public properties, parks and recreation, and future land uses. As Elizabeth I think just said, and I will be brief on this first part, I'll just kind of run through these slides because it's almost redundant to what she just talked about. It's a lot of coordinated strategies over the last couple of years. We've done a lot of research and work with the Sheriff's Department as well, about public safety improvements, improved properties, and increased homeownership. Our observations, especially in the Paiute neighborhood, identified high-crime neighborhood in Housing Needs Assessment. Sheriff's Department did this survey, gave us all the research on the gang, or I should say the issues related to gangs, drug activity, and vandalism, especially in the vacant homes, and gave us a list of actions that needed to be taken. The Housing Department, of course, has done some property improvements already, but there is still a lot to be done. Some of our observations are absentee homeowners, vacant foreclosed homes, and we've seen, and this even started before the current housing crisis. HU D predicting a high rate of foreclosures, and the actions the city, as you know, the city has purchased, and rehabilitating the homes, and has plans for improving the properties and reselling them at some point. Paiute Neighborhood Vision Master Plan is the plan that, and it includes, it is an emphasis on the circulation between the new youth Lancaster youth ball fields, the Paiute neighborhoods, Paiute Middle School, and the MACC, which is the Medical Ambulatory Care Center. I assume you're familiar with the local county facility that has been approved there. It addresses physical improvements and the planning improvements and recommendations that we have done.
You know, not that I'm impatient, but in light of the fact that we have the highest mortality rate in the county, when are they going to build that thing?
The MACC?
Yes.
I think they're planning to start construction in two years. Right now, we're doing all of the necessary steps that you have to take to get there in terms of environmental, Phase 1, and things like that. We should be coming back to council, I hope, in the next 60 to 90 days with an agreement with Los Angeles County. We have a draft agreement that we're both reviewing right now.
In light of the people, in light of the fact that a lot of people are going to die in the next two years needlessly without that facility, is there some way to speed it up? I mean, they've been promising us this for how many years, Mr. Bozigni?
It's been several years. What we're, what...
And every year that goes by, we have people dying. I mean, this isn't a small thing. What do we do to make this a priority?
We will be with the county. We've given them the agreement. We'll expedite getting the agreement back, and then that'll start their process. Talking about their process, I don't know, but we will follow that up.
Thank you.
So what this graphic illustrates right here is just the plan view of the Paiute neighborhood itself, and it shows graphically the improvements that are going to be taking place, including, and I won't use the pointer here, but I think you're pretty familiar with the Lancaster youth ball fields, the MAC County Center right down here, a few residential infill projects that have taken place around, within the Paiute neighborhood, and as well as we've illustrated, especially up on the far right, tentative track maps that were approved over time that probably will be infill residential development. And what I'll do is, the rest of the presentation is the primary, I will go in order of probably most important recommendations that need to take place in the neighborhood. It's, I hope I'm going in the right direction here. Circulation and street improvements are very important. Drainage, neighborhood connections, public properties, parks and recreation, and future land use. There are some vacant lands as well. Within circulation, probably, given that there is going to be this youth ball fields and the MAC Center, other improvements taking place, there already exists some traffic and pedestrian issues around the Paiute Middle School. And given that there's also bus services only available outside of a two-mile radius, we know that a lot of people drive their kids to school, or kids are walking to school. And the most important issue that we researched is this corner of Fifth and H11. It's congested at the end of the school day. There is not a traffic signal there. There is, there's a need for some kind of traffic control or pedestrian improvements at that corner. This is, parents, we made the recommendation that parents should be encouraged to exit onto Third, which is west of the school, as opposed to only using, utilizing Fifth. And there are lots of, we have documents to back this up. There are lots of ways to go about that. I won't go into the details. School traffic, recommendations for Fifth. Fifth is the north-south street on the east side of the school. The city expects two traffic lanes to be, are adequate for Fifth until at least 2030. So there are room for improvements. There's a lot more right-of-way than is necessary right now, is what this is saying. And there are ways to mitigate the difficulties of both pedestrian and traffic on that street. Bulbouts, which is kind of narrowing the pedestrian crossings at the corners, designated bus loading zone. The buses do park there, but there should be, whether it's painted or raised, bus-out bus loading zone, and possibly a planted median. Now, planted median, yes, of course, we would stay within the drought-tolerant guidelines, and that's something we need to consider in the future. These are just illustrations of a good drought-tolerant median. Pedestrian circulation, the new park is expected to generate more pedestrian traffic. It may increase the need for sidewalk and traffic control devices. They will require studies, we realize that, but you can see some of these intersections are not even marked for crosswalks, but it's something that needs to be looked at. Sidewalks currently on major streets, but not on the smaller residential circulation street. There are several streets where you see the pedestrians, especially the school students have trampled people's lawn. It is in the public right-of-way, but there are some issues that need to be addressed. Here's some of our recommendations. Now, the upper-right-hand photo is a picture of Fifth Street looking north along that wall. It's not the most attractive place or most comfortable place to walk to and from school. We have addressed some issues of how to improve that there. And as well as the lower-right-hand slide is kind of an indication of the east-west streets, where there are sidewalks and there are planted parkways that are within the city of right-of-way but aren't necessarily maintained, and there are some issues and some recommendations that we have made in order to allow for more pedestrian uses, as well as improving the looks of those pedestrian connections. Here's just a good indication, one of the developments along Fifth has already done this, which is a tiered system of landscape, which creates a more comfortable place to walk, and looks pretty good. And this is, we did address, there's some pretty large trees in the neighborhood, and some of them even are in public right-of-way. We, I don't think we would recommend taking trees out. This is just looking down one of the wonderful streets that has the sycamore trees on it. If new trees are planted, or if recommended for both sidewalk or setback locations, we have lots of recommendations for drought-tolerant trees, drought-tolerant planting in the parkways, as well as you can, if there is an issue with one of the parkways, which is the area between the sidewalk and the street, there are lots of other alternatives besides just leaving it dirt that could still allow for pedestrians to walk on it. Drainage, probably, there are lots of reasons for drainage issues. I won't go into that, but there are lots of new techniques. I know that the city has already probably sent out some recommendations of how to limit your water usage, et cetera, but there are lots of other techniques that can be used within the residential area. Swales, which is something you see at the lower right, it's hard to tell by this slide, but it's a concave ditch slightly that is planted with drought-tolerant materials, rather than the mound that you normally see. Neighborhood connections, now this is mostly, there were a couple of concerns. There, it was pointed out to us, some apartment complexes that basically had dead-end streets, no ways to exit, no thorough, no through-traffic within those. Those create lots of problems, so we did a couple of analysis of how those could be improved, and given that those are on private property, I'll go, there's some apartment complexes up here that if market, if it's ever, if these should go up for sale in the future, it's probably most appropriate to infill these with single-family residential as shown in this. And this is what, this is a Sierra Villa East, and there are some circulation issues that create safety problems and crime problems as well. If they were able to have through-traffic, or at least a lane that went through these rather than just dead-end lanes, it would help a lot. Air lane, I won't go in too much about this, it's just that the east side of Seventh Street is kind of broken up. It doesn't follow the residential pattern. Eventually, when residential does fill in around that, the best way to integrate into the neighborhood would be street improvements and a continuation of the sidewalk on the right side. Public properties, just, one, for instance, one of the public properties that we saw happening there is the Water District is improving or fencing off one of the locations there that's right in the middle of residential neighborhood. One of our recommendations would be to work with the Water District and use some kind of creative landscape material to improve it and make it fit within the neighborhood. Lower right-hand corner is a real good example, and that is here in Lancaster, of a good drought-tolerant or ziruscape landscape design. The Neighborhood Impact House has been, what's the right word?
It's going to be a house that's run by three organizations to meet the needs of the area that the city can't provide, primarily for social service, for people to get help. It's not really assisted through law enforcement or code enforcement. It's more for social issues that occur with families, and they have a place to go to get resources, to get help.
And it's at a prominent location, and it fits right in with the residential neighborhood. Parks and Recreation, as we said before, there's lots of opportunity in this. North side of Paiute Middle School is an unused piece of land. It could be used for a fitness trail. It is narrow, and it could also be done in an efficient drought-tolerant manner. Future land use. Now, on the far east side of the Paiute area, there is probably a strip block-wide that is vacant between Paiute and Challenger Way. Eventually, where that is adjacent to Avenue I, there has to be some consideration of how we meld this neighborhood into commercial development, as well as a continuation of a few of these streets that will probably eventually connect to Challenger Way, and how those residential areas will integrate with the rest. And this is just, it's difficult to see here, but this is overlaying the Paiute Neighborhood Master Vision Plan right on top of the Northeast Gateway Corridor Plan, so you can see all the future planned improvements for this. And I'll leave, I believe this is the end of this here, and I'll hand it back over to Elizabeth for you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, before then, I want to reiterate what Elizabeth said. This helps guide us in our future investments. Any of the projects in here that would be proposed would go through the budget process, and you would approve all of those projects. So by approving this tonight, you're not approving those projects, you're approving this as what will guide us. There are some of these in here that are going to be some long-term projects.
I noticed that we have Chairman Cook here from the Architecture and Design Commission. On the parkways, how far along are we making that a citywide requirement?
We're working on that right now. We're focusing on residential, but we have been talking about streets, pathways, walkways, so it is in our target. We're hoping to have it throughout by the end of December, early January, next year.
It's going to take a year?
Well, we're focusing everything, not just...
Okay, thank you. But we're moving, all right? Okay, thank you.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
In coming up with this design, Perkins L., the manager of Neighborhood Community Building, met with residents in that area, as well as coordinating with some of the things that were brought up at some meetings with public safety. And a lot of the things in this design are what the neighbors wanted, as well as the apartment complexes is what the sheriffs needed to be safe. So a lot of the changes in this area have a specific purpose, to make it a safer area for everybody involved.
I'm a believer. Do we have a motion? Wait a minute, wait a minute, do we have any speaker cards first?
No speaker's cards, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any discussion?
No, one question from Council. It says concur here on the recommendation. Can we do this by consensus, or do you need a vote on this for direction of staff?
Let's take a vote on it, just for the record.
I'll move that we concur and direct staff as applicable.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, let's vote. Thank you. We're focusing on residential, but we have been talking about streets, pathways, walkways, so it is in our target. We're hoping to have it throughout by the end of December, early January next year.
It's going to take a year?
Well, we've accomplished everything, not just.
Okay, thank you. But we're moving, all right? Okay, thank you.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
In coming up with this design, Perkins L., the manager of Neighborhood Community Building, met with residents in that area, as well as coordinating with some of the things that were brought up at some meetings with public safety. And a lot of the things in this design are what the neighbors wanted, as well as the apartment complexes is what the sheriffs needed to be safe. So, a lot of the changes in this area have a specific purpose, to make it a safer area for everybody involved.
I'm a believer. Do we have a motion? Wait a minute, wait a minute, do we have any speaker cards first?
No speaker's cards, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any discussion?
No, one question from Council. It says concur here on the recommendation. Can we do this by consensus, or do you need a vote on this for direction of staff?
Let's take a vote on it, just for the record.
I'll move that we concur and direct staff as applicable.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, let's vote. It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much. The Council Consent Calendar, anything, anybody want anything removed or pulled for further discussion?
I'll move that we adopt the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. I guess I should wait for the light to come on, huh? Okay. Now, we have Public Hearing Item 1. We'll hear a staff report from Public Works Director Randy Williams.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, in September of this past year, Governor Schwarzenegger signed into law, a new Senate bill that would establish a fee that is called the Green California Building Standards Commission, Green Building Fee. It is a fee that has been designated to the municipalities, anyone who is issuing permits to collect on behalf of the state and then forward to the state. It is a fee that amounts to essentially $4 for the first 100,000 square feet of developed space, and then an additional dollar for every 100,000 square feet thereafter. The city will be allowed to retain 10% of that vast sum of money for the processing fees. And I say vast sum of money somewhat tongue-in-cheek, because in calendar year 2008, just completed, if we were to have been collecting this fee during that period of time, it would have totaled $4,060. And that would have been based upon $101 million of activity development in the city of Lancaster. And of course, the city's contribution, or the amount that we would have been allowed to keep, would have been $406. So, you can see it's a very small fee, but it is a fee that the state has decreed necessary in order for various commissions at the state level to prepare and then implement new green building standards for design and construction. If there are questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I could.
It's the big, right?
Yes, sir. We have to do it.
Thank you. Any speaker cards?
No speaker's cards, Mr. Mayor.
Let's close the public hearing. Any discussion?
I'd like to make a statement, Mr. Mayor. You know, as Mr. Williams said, this is a small fee. But the thing that gripes me about it is that this is a Chinese water torture from the state of California. I mean, it might be a dollar here, a dollar there, but it adds up, and they hit our citizens throughout this state with taxes and fees continually, because they can't be responsible enough to balance their own budget. And it's just irresponsible to put it on the back of the cities and make us the bad guys. I don't care how big it is. If it's a penny, it still shouldn't have been done. And we're going to have to vote with this, and we checked this out, and we had a memo from our attorney, that if we don't, the state of California will start levying stuff on us and taking money away from us, besides they do it anyway, but steal from us now and then, but they'd fine us even more. And it just, yes, I have to vote for it, and I'm going to do it screaming and kicking. So, well, maybe not screaming, but.
Oh, you're doing a good job.
So, and as you know, I mean, this council, and especially the mayor, is a big green advocate. I've been a big green advocate for doing solar and doing whatever we can. It's good. Let them do it with the amount of money they already have.
Shouldn't we call it a water torture instead of?
Okay, well, you know, it's the old saying, we'll call it the water torture, you know?
Okay.
Recycled water, yeah, you wish, you know?
Yeah, there is a sense of resignation about all of this. You know, get used to it. The state is going to come steal our money, and our services are going to deteriorate, and we've got a really tough road ahead of us the next couple of years because of a bunch of thieves in Sacramento. There, I said it.
So, was Ron making a motion after he made a statement?
No, you can, Councilman Mayor.
Please do it grudgingly.
Come on, eat your liver.
So, I will make the motion that, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 09-03.
Second? All right, I'll second. I can second, can't I? Okay, let's vote. It's unanimous. And we'll now hear the staff report on New Business Item 1 from the city attorney. And before you start, for those of you who read the paper today, we're starting a new rule. It's called the PK Shaw Rule. You have to have your speaker cards in before the first public speaker speaks. After that, we're going to close the speaker cards. And that shall be known throughout history in Lancaster as the PK Shaw Rule. And for those of you who don't get what I'm talking about, read the front page of today's paper. Okay?
As you're all aware, the city does contract with Los Angeles County Animal Control for animal control services. And to accommodate that contract and to provide ease of administration for controlling animals within the county and within the city boundaries, we have adopted by reference the County Code Dealing with Animal Control. And it's chapter, or article, or Title 10 of the County Code. Within that code, there are numerous provisions dealing with stray animals, dangerous and vicious dogs, and how the county would deal with those. The provision dealing with potentially dangerous and vicious dogs, and I'll go through the definition of that in a minute, so we know exactly what we're talking about here. But that procedure that they have adopted is almost verbatim the procedure that is adopted by the state legislature in the Food and Agricultural Code. In that code, the legislature provides a very detailed process for hearings before Superior Court Judge to determine whether or not a dog is a potentially dangerous or a vicious dog. There's an appeal from that hearing before the Superior Court Judge to the Superior Court to another judge. This whole process is supposed to occur within a very, very short period of time. Once the animal control officer determines that a dog is either a potentially dangerous or a vicious dog, they're supposed to file the complaint with Superior Court within five to 10, well, they're supposed to file the complaint with the Superior Court, and the hearing is supposed to be held by the Superior Court within five to 10 days. Doesn't happen. Doesn't happen at all. That process is taking anywhere from eight to 12 months. So, needless to say, the county has not been following that part of their ordinance. In looking at the, some of, I was trying to get some statistics to find out how often they use this process, what the results were of the process. What we got back was that during the past year, there have been 75 dog bite cases. There have been 100 and, let me make sure I get my numbers right, 196 aggressive dogs. Now, whatever an aggressive dog is, I don't know, because it's not defined in their ordinance anywhere, but they still use that category of dog. I don't know whether that's inclusive of both potentially dangerous and vicious dogs, but it's something. Of those 196 dogs, 168 were euthanized, 28 were released back to their owners. Unable to tell from those statistics whether or not the 75 dog bite cases were included within that 196, or whether they were in addition to the 196. My guess is they're included within the 196, because there was no indication of any special dispensation, or disposition, rather, of those cases. Now, what happened to the process before the Superior Court and the appeal to the Superior Court? We've been able to determine that there were approximately four cases. There may actually be some more, but the person who was providing the data could only access those four cases. There were two filed with respect to dogs impounded in '06, '07, and two filed with respect to dogs impounded within '08, '09. There was one case that was determined as of this morning, in which the dog owner agreed to a plea bargain, three years probation, three years can't own or possess a dog, can't live at a location where dogs are. And that was it. There is no indication on the record of any fine with respect to this particular situation, and it appears to be a vicious dog as opposed to a potentially dangerous dog. So, there's a record here that, and let me back up a little bit. On the 196, I was troubled by this number and how they were getting through this process if they weren't following the court process to determine, which is what's in their ordinance. And apparently, what they're doing is, there's a separate chapter of their code dealing with impounded animals. If they impound an animal, pick up a stray animal on the street, pick it up based on a complaint, pick it up because the owner wants it picked up, for whatever reason, they pick up an animal. If it's licensed, they have to give notice to the owner, and the owner has six days to come in and claim the dog. If the owner fails to claim the dog within six days, then that dog is euthanized. If it's an unlicensed dog, they may, but are not required to give notice in the newspaper. And if an owner does not show up and claim that unlicensed dog within four days, they can then euthanize it. My understanding is they're waiting five days, but nevertheless, they are using that procedure. And that was how they got to the 168 of the 196 dogs being euthanized as a result of being impounded. So, there is that process. As I was drafting the ordinance, initially, we set up our own whole, our entire new process for dealing with these dogs. And one of the comments we got from Animal Control was, we should use, to avoid any due process problems, we should use their process. It was only after that that I found out they don't use their process. But needless to say, I redrafted the ordinance to include their process. But I was a little troubled by the initial requirement, a mandatory requirement of a hearing in the Superior Court to make the determination. And in the Food and Agricultural Code, there is a provision that allows us to set up an administrative hearing process, or to adopt an entirely different process that is more stringent than the state law. So, using that authority, I've redrafted the ordinance, and there were some additional revisions made today, which I believe you had before you on the dais. I've set up an administrative hearing process that is optional. Animal Control makes the initial determination of whether a dog meets the criteria of a dangerous, potentially dangerous dog or a vicious dog. If the dog is licensed, they notify the owner of that determination. The owner has the option of requesting a hearing before an administrative hearing officer, not the Superior Court, an administrative hearing officer appointed by the city. Then, obviously, that will increase some of our costs of animal control, but I think it will expedite the process. We won't be stuck with these hearing processes that go on for eight to 12 months if you go to the Superior Court. Even though it's required to be a fast process, it's still, by the time they continue it...
You mean the dogs get to court date before the people do?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. I knew you'd react to that one. They're required to have a hearing within 10 days. So, but obviously, the judges, the judges are not doing that. They're finding reasons to continue it, to extend the hearing dates. And so, the hearings, and they're treated as short cause matters and special matters, special civil matters. These hearings are going out eight to 12 months. But in the meantime, during that process, we're paying the bill. It's, I think, $10, $10.47 per day, and that's if the dog's healthy. If he's sick, it's more, $16 per day. On an, if we go out for a year, that's $3,820 that the city of Lancaster is responsible for paying to house that dog while they go to court. So, not a bad thing if...
Well, I'm embarrassed. Is anyone else?
The problem, and we can impose that cost back on the owner if the owner wants to claim his dog at the end. If they want to just abandon the dog after putting the city and the animal control through the hearing process, then we're stuck with the bill. So, there is that. So, to avoid that, we've set up this administrative hearing to expedite that process. If the owner is upset with that determination, the determination of the hearing officer, we've provided for an appeal to Superior Court. If the dog is not licensed, then we skip that whole process, and we go back to applying the impound process where four days' notice, and they can dispose of the dog.
Okay, if they appeal it to Superior Court, who pays for the care of the dog?
We're still paying.
I'm sorry, what?
We pay it until, well, if they appeal it to the Superior Court and ultimately get the dog back, then they're going to pay it. The owner's going to pay that if they want the dog back.
Isn't there any way to make it that they have to pay it up front?
I thought about that. I think from a due process standpoint, that might be troublesome, but it might be worth putting into the ordinance a mandatory deposit for an appeal.
Who said that?
We can do that.
Yeah, you got to do it for a parking ticket. Why couldn't you do it for this?
We'll add that language. The other thing that is apparently happening, and it's a little tough getting some of the data on this, is that no fines are being imposed on the owners. And one of the things, when I started drafting this ordinance, is that my focus was on bad conduct of the dogs, but bad conduct of the owners. The owners need to take responsibility for their dogs. They need to educate their dogs. They need to teach them how to act properly in public. They need to control their dogs. Failure to do any of those things ought to result in a fine. And we've provided for a potentially dangerous dog, $500 per incident, a vicious dog, $1,000 per incident. Let me just review very quickly the definitions of those two categories of dog. A potentially dangerous dog is a dog, and under, I've modified the state statute and the county ordinance a little bit on this definition, because under the state statute and the county ordinance, a dog which, when unprovoked, engages in any behavior that requires defensive action by any person or to prevent bodily injury, when the person and dog are off the property of the owner or custodian of the dog, has to occur at least twice within a 36-month period before that dog would be treated as a potentially dangerous dog. I've eliminated that twice per 36 months. If it does it once, it's subject to the process. Second element of the definition, any dog which unprovoked bites a person or otherwise engages in aggressive behavior, causing less severe injury than is defined in the section of the County Code. And that's a statutory definition, and it's, if it's severe injury, it's, you know, tearing, flesh, et cetera. A bite, you know, just a bite, maybe a puncture wound, that's, you know, very limited damage, that would fall back in under this potentially dangerous as opposed to vicious dog. And then, any dog which, when unprovoked, is killed, seriously bitten, inflicted injury, or otherwise caused injury to a domestic animal off the property of the owner. That would be included within the definition. Under vicious dog, a vicious dog is one that causes serious damage to the person that they attack. They have to bite the person. A mere threat of a bite is not sufficient to bring it within the vicious dog definition. Any dog that is seized under Section 599AA of the Penal Code... Any dog that is seized under Section 599AA of the Penal Code, which is a dog that's been trained to fight, any dog seized under that is automatically a vicious dog. The county ordinance, by the way, deletes that particular requirement from their definition. So, it's in the statute, and I put it back into our statute or into our ordinance. Any dog which, when unprovoked, inflicts severe injury upon a person or kills a person, clearly a vicious dog. And then, any dog previously determined to be a vicious dog by another jurisdiction, that also would qualify. So, those are the categories. It's really a matter of degree as to what the dog has done. Frequently, a potentially dangerous dog is one that, while exhibiting some aggressive behavior, is still a dog that may be salvaged with training, with the right kind of control, controlled by an adult on a leash if it's off the property, controlled on the property so that kids can't get to it, those types of conditions. And we provide it for a variety of conditions. If the dog, if it's determined by Animal Control that this dog is not one that is to be euthanized, then the dog can be returned to the owner, subject to a variety of conditions. One of the conditions is that it be licensed, neutered, and vaccinated. Another one is that it be enrolled in a dog obedience school. And we've defined, thanks to the help of a number of citizens that we met with, we have a definition of a qualified training program, and we've added that to the ordinance so that it's not just, you know, Joe Blow down the street wanting to open a dog school. He actually has to be qualified to run a dog obedience training school. And so, they have to be enrolled, and they have to complete the course within 60 days of release to the dog or they're picked up again. And that'll be, the owners will be on Animal Control to enforce that 60-day requirement. The owners have to provide proof of insurance, liability insurance for the dog, $300,000 If the dog is off the property of the owner, it has to be under the owner's control and has to be muzzled with a basket or cage muzzle. And it has to be controlled by an adult capable of controlling the dog. Two elements to that, adult capable of controlling the dog. I've seen some young, even older women trying to control a large dog. It's just not possible. I've seen some men not capable of controlling dogs.
What was I saying?
So, it's, you have to be able to control that dog, or it shouldn't be off the premises and should not be on the leash with you trying to control it. And the dog must be spayed or neutered. And finally, then, before the dog's released, the owner will pay a fine for having allowed its dog to be loose and to have engaged in the conduct that it engaged in. The fine for potentially dangerous dog where they haven't inflicted any serious harm on the other person is $500 for each separate occurrence. Then, with respect to vicious dogs, all of those conditions apply. If a vicious dog, for some reason, is allowed to go back to the owner, if the hearing officer determines that this dog can be trained and they can demonstrate that it's capable of acting like and reacting to other people without serious harm, then they have to go through all of those above conditions. But they also have to have an enclosure on their property that has both a cement bottom and a wire top, or a top to it of some kind. It doesn't have to be wire. A top to the cage to have it on the property. And the owner would have to notify all the utilities and the U.S. Postal Service of the location of that dog. And if that dog is no longer at that location for any reason, they have to notify Animal Control. And they would then be subject to a fine of $1,000 per occurrence. The one thing that was left in the ordinance that I had meant to take out was a requirement that a potentially dangerous dog that's been released in the owner's must wear a fluorescent yellow collar. One of the objections from a number of people that we met with was that there are a variety of colors of collars that, close to yellow, and close inside, and these are given out at pet stores, they're sold at pet stores, and there's a potential for confusion. And I figured if the dog is otherwise restrained and muzzled, the collar was somewhat overkill. And it wasn't necessary. So, I would recommend we take that.
We wouldn't want you to engage in overkill here, Dave.
Never. Never. Okay, that's the dangerous and vicious dog ordinance. The next part of it is the mandatory spay and neutering for pit bulls and rottweilers. Now, this chapter got a lot more objections, and I think you'll hear some more objections tonight from various owners for a variety of reasons. But let me just outline what happens. A dog that is four months of age is required, under the county ordinance right now, any dog, four months or older, is required to be spayed or neutered. Under our ordinance, it's just pit bulls and rottweilers. Four months of age, and that's the time when they have to be licensed as well. So, when they go in for their first license, they'd have to show that they've been spayed or neutered, unless they get a written document from a licensed veterinarian indicating that the health of the dog would be endangered because of the spay or neutering at that particular age, and then indicating an age at which that dog could be safely spayed or neutered. That's an option for some dogs. And I've read enough of the materials that have been provided and talked to enough people to believe that there are some dogs that spay or neutering them at four months of age is too early. It's just not healthy for that dog. So, it may be up to a year before it might be healthy for the dog. And I think that exception to the rule is good for all dog owners, even pit bulls and The other exception is for any show dog or any purebred dog that is licensed through or certified through the American Kennel Association. And they have to apply for an exemption, an unaltered restricted dog license to certify that. The other exception is for hunting dogs. And any dog that is a trained hunting dog whose owner has a valid hunting license and demonstrates that to the Animal Control, they would be eligible for an unaltered restricted dog license. So, those are the key details, key points of that particular ordinance.
Any speaker cards? Yeah, let's get in. We've got the PK rule going down. Anyone else going?
Come on. Ma'am?
This item? Is it on this item?
I'm sorry.
Which item?
It's on the speaker.
Hello, I'm Pauline East, 4319 West Avenue, L6 in Quartz Hill. Good evening, and it's happy to be here. I didn't know I'd be first because actually, I'm on your side, and I thought...
Maybe that's why you were first.
A lot of opposition against the mandatory spay and neuter. My objection is, if I have one, is that I do clearly see that this is a very visionary way to go with these vicious dogs. At one of the later last council meetings, I think some of the real dog enthusiasts and experts got up and just said that people will just choose a nether dog and make it vicious. So, I'm really here in pleading that we adopt, by reference, the county, a mandatory spay and neuter for all animals, not just breed specific. I volunteered at the shelter. It's not getting better. It's getting worse. By March, we will have litters of babies brought in. We cannot do this any longer. And even if we just take the time to just say, "Do this, let's just try it for two or three years, and if it doesn't work, we'll undo the law again and go back to allowing people to have," you know, clearly, the laws are made for people that aren't respectable anyway. I mean, the people that read No Trespassing don't want to trespass anyway. So, we need to really take and look at this law and just say, "Does it, will it make sense for just rots and pits? Won't they just go get another breed of dog?" So, I'm here for mandatory spay and neuter for all breed dogs and cats. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I want to add one other comment to the spay or neutering issue. And it's based on an objection that we did get from Animal Control, that they have, according to them, they have no ability to tell what dog is a pit bull or a rottweiler. They can't identify them by sight. And as a result, before they would require spay or neutering of any of these dogs...
Tell them to email me a picture, I'll help them out.
I'm reporting the objection from Animal Control. In our ordinance, we have provided that, we've provided a definition of it. There's a method for determining what is a pit bull or a rottweiler using an approved checklist of characteristics, which, and by the way, I've seen reports from Animal Control officers, they have no trouble identifying a pit bull on the street. So, it'd be shocking that they couldn't identify it in the kennel when it comes in for licensing. But there's also a procedure for owners who object to the determination that their dog is either a pit bull or a rottweiler. They can ask for a breed determination hearing. And then, at that hearing, they can offer whatever evidence they have. If the city has any interest, it can offer evidence. You know, I suspect we wouldn't be involved in many of them, but there's a procedure for determining this and allowing owners to have a determination made. It may involve a DNA test. Though I've seen some things from the Internet that say that a DNA test can't be used to determine what is a pit bull. But I believe it can be used to determine what are the main breeds that are considered pit bulls. So, I'll leave it at that.
You know, if I were king, we would have a rule that if you have a blue cap or a red cap or you have a dog with you, we're going to take your dog. I mean, the only reason for this, well, not the only reason, but a primary reason for this is I want to deliberately harass the gangs. I want the gangs to know they're not welcome here. We will take their cars. We will take their dogs. And next month, we're going to talk about dealing with Children's Services on if they have children, we should take them too. In the City of Lancaster, if you belong to a gang, we are going to make your life miserable, and this is just one of the ways we're doing it. And so, I'm kind of in a quandary here in that I'm, you know, we're talking about, you know, a very real issue about whether or not we should spay and neuter all dogs, which I kind of tend to think maybe we should, but I'm not sure. But at the same time, we're also talking about a message we're sending to these guys terrorizing our neighborhoods. We're going to take everything you own, and that's really what we want to do. So, just so long as you folks are aware of that, there's two purposes here. One is, there is a problem with pit bulls tearing up little kids, and I think we all know that, and I think we all know that because of irresponsible owners. But there's also, they've become iconic with gangs. And anything, I mean, it just drives me insane when I see these guys with their blue caps and their pit bulls walking down the street as if they own it, terrorizing the neighborhood, you know? And I think it drives you guys crazy too. So, let's do something about it. We take their dogs this month. Next month, we'll decide what else we're going to take. So, you know, let's understand, there's two, I don't want to have any secrets about it. I don't want to hide it. I don't want to run from it. We are doing this to deliberately harass a certain group of people because that's what the citizens want us to do, and I think that's really what you want us to do. If there's a way to mitigate that so that the decent folks who have responsible, who are responsible owners, I really want to hear how to mitigate it. But the goal of this is to make life miserable for people wearing the red and blue caps. I mean, that's the long and the short of it. So, who's next? Oh, I get to pick, don't I? Katie Clausen. And you always bring that adorable dog that makes me feel like a schmuck for doing any of this.
Hi, I'm Katie Clausen. I'm a professional dog trainer. Good evening to everybody. A couple of things I wanted to address on the newest draft that you have done. One of them is, you're talking about a six-foot leash. To me, that's too long because a lot of people walk with their dogs at the end of the leash. Six feet, you get much more inertia when the dog decides to charge, okay? And if you have a leash like this and six feet, that dog is going to snap it in two. So, if you have a four-foot leash, you have less potential, the dog is going to be closer to where the dog can get away. So, that's just one thing. But the biggest thing where I have an issue, I want to tell a story that is very true that happened to me. I train dogs for a living. I trained a dog, a master breed dog, from a puppy. And the owner wanted him for a service dog. Told him I wasn't sure it was possible, and we proceeded. I worked with the dog for a little over a year and a half. This dog, at four months of age, was a great puppy. At six months of age, his testicles didn't drop, and when they finally did, his temperament went from zero to 100 in change after his first rabies vaccine because he actually was delayed on his vaccine. So, there was the first thing that we saw. So, we continued to train this dog. He was wonderful everywhere we took him. We took him to malls. We took him to any kind of event we could. I took him to Home Depot. My client is a quadriplegic, so he had only limited amount of use in his right hand. He was in a wheelchair. Here's the issue. He knew more than I did, at least he thought he did. And I told him, when the dog was two years old, when I was training one of his other dogs, that this dog was starting to exhibit more dominance behavior. And because he seemed to think he knew more than I did, he ignored me. That dog, when he was two and a half years old, I was at his house training another dog, another Borbo, and I was sitting down, and I went to pet this dog, and he had an ear infection, and this dog attacked me. He tried to kill me, and that's no joke. He did serious damage to my arms. If it wasn't for the fact that I have been, I've worked with many police dogs, I would have been killed. I told this man that he needed to do something. He needed to get an applied veterinary behaviorist, or at the very least, a behaviorist, to come and do an evaluation on this dog. This was the third bite on this dog, which I only had known about one that was never reported, and of course, I reported it. Now, this dog, I told him formally, formerly, I told him and sent him a letter, registered letter, saying, "I am taking myself away from this dog. This dog, in my opinion, needs to be euthanized. This dog is going to kill somebody." I am not joking, and I understand how much he loved this dog. I loved the dog too, very much. So, for me to see this dog's temperament change, and this was not just because...
You know, I've got to be fair to everyone, and I'm letting you go over...
Long story short, the dog is dead. He almost killed somebody.
What is it you're recommending?
What I'm recommending is, is that when you see a dog, you guys have a potentially vicious dog, I strongly feel that just sending them out for basic obedience is not the answer. You need to have somebody who really knows and/or also have a veterinarian that is in the behavior end to assess this dog because this was genetic. the behavior end to assess this dog, because this was genetic. Partially, it was the owner, and part of this was genetic. And I found out later that the father of this dog had all of his teeth pulled because he was aggressive. So the moral... Yeah. The moral of the story is, it's not just about training. There can be underlying causes, and I think Dr. Bosman will get into that.
Thank you. Sky Valencia?
Hello, thank you for letting me speak, and I wanted to thank you also for putting this...
She gets more time than that.
And thank you very much. Now, I want to thank you for putting time into this, because this is so important. And I've been doing rescue work since 1998. I'm the founder of the St. Martin's Animal Foundation. And we started off as an outreach program in the inner city to teach kids to get away from gangs and the whole idea of being into dog fighting. And since we've been doing it, we've come across a lot of pit bulls. And because of that, I opened up a rescue and kind of like a training for animals, especially specifically, pit bulls. And at our sanctuary, it's basically women that work there and teens. And we work with every kind of pit bull you can think of from the inner city that we find, from puppies to old dogs. And I just want to make sure that you take into consideration that I'm so happy you want to punish these people, because they do deserve to have everything taken away from them. But I want to make sure that the dogs don't get the short end of the stick here, because our dogs are service dogs. They work with mentally challenged kids. They go to senior citizen homes. They're great dogs. They just fall into the wrong hands, and unfortunately, these bullies use them for the wrong reasons. And I just also want to say that I also agree with Pauline, Pauline, to make it not breed specific, because I get calls every day from the Lancaster Shelter to, "Please pick up this old senior dog. We put down three purebred pugs last week." There's no reason for that, and that's because we have too many. There's just too many of everything. And I understand people want to make money, but now, just like anything else, if it's not working and we're killing this many animals, it's time to get another job. Find something else to do besides breeding animals.
So you're suggesting we do the spay, spay and neuter for all of them?
Please, I think that would be the best. And it's true, you can't always tell what a pit bull is. I mean, you can see some look like pits, some are pit mixes, some are mixed with labs. A lot of people who hate pit bulls don't even know they have a dog that's part pit bull in their family. And it's because they've gone bred way overboard and because they're mixing with other kinds of breeds. People are just letting them breed, because there's not any rules. There's no rules. And I really think that it helped alleviate the Lancaster Shelter a lot, because right now, it's just, it's gotten to an abusive point, because it's too many. So that's all I want to say, and thank you for doing what you're doing.
How do I make the gangs feel like I'm picking on them?
Take away everything else. I mean, make... Really, you've got to make it... When they get popped, and we really got to start popping some more gang bangers and catching them for what they're doing, because they're doing it. The dogs are coming in thrashed with their ears ripped. You can tell there've been fights. We're finding dead dogs, pit bulls. We've got to do more undercover work and bust these guys and make examples of them and put their faces out there in the newspaper and show that this is it. You go fight a dog, you're going to jail. We need billboards. We need advertisement.
Thank you.
Yeah. In Spanish, too. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You had those hips checked?
Hi, I'm Larry Bosman, North Valley Veterinary Clinic in here at Lancaster. I think this is a good start in general, and I think we'll have to tweak things as we go along, see what happens. I do have some concerns, some brief concerns. There's one about the approved obedience course. There's one other thing before we get to there. It may be an unrealistic expectation to get an appointment with a doctor within 10 days. So you may want to potentially look at, has an appointment, you know, verified by the doctor? Because sometimes, you know, it's longer than 10 days, for the most part. Getting to the more meat of the issue is, I appreciate what the High Desert Obedience Club is doing and stuff, but this is far beyond when the dogs are reaching this level to be putting them into obedience. And I'm concerned that there may be risk imparted onto them. So I think it's real important that if you're approving something that approved, what it was called, approved behavioral program, that you need to... I think that needs to be defined more specifically. If the city says that these people are approved, what does that really mean? And a lot of them are knowledgeable. Five years of teaching experience, what does that mean? Have they done one eight-week course a year for five years? That's only 40 hours. A person who's a master dog trainer easily has 18, 20 hours, 18, 20 years plus, and they've learned a lot of these things. And then the issue is about behavioral modification. Obedience training and behavioral modification. They use a lot of the same techniques, but they have a different outlook. Anxiety is your key culprit. So you can have a dog sit, stay, and do all these nice things, and that's what happens in the training ring and in the show ring and things like that. But if they... What we need with dogs that have behavioral problems, we need to teach them to relax. And there's some specific techniques that are at that point.
That's what my wife says about me, you know?
I've heard you're an animal. Okay, so basically, there's three levels. There's obedience problems, and this is what mostly obedience trainers are working on, just dogs behaving badly. The next is temperament issues, so I think temperament testing is important. The one concern about temperament testing I do have is, it can be very... It can be... Can easily be biased and not appropriately applied. And those dogs are often a social context issue and may have organic problems. So when you're assessing a behavioral dog, really, you get into... There can be underlying, like, bloodwork problems, issues with organic problems, physiology, et cetera. Those need to be developed. So I think perhaps the trainers, if they're going to be there, and they see there were these dogs coming out, they really need to get the underlying information to find out if there's a physiological problem. We've got to correct that first, because you can keep on doing all the training you want, if you don't handle that underlying physiological problem, we're not going to have success. But kind of the bulk of it, I ran out of time. Somebody has time in the future and wants to grant that to me, I can finish my other few statements. Thank you for your time. Unless you have questions.
Why don't you give me the highlights of what else you were recommending to us? I mean, real highlighted.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just my main concern, draw back on just assigning a potentially dangerous or vicious dog to basic obedience. They must be learned to relax. They can't learn successfully in a stressful environment. That's going to be stressful for them, so underlying thing. I believe if you start getting into the level of these type of situations, you should actually have these trainers complete a course, have some sort of certification, ADP, APDT, and NATO do certification, and they go at a little bit different level. Might require further on protection, that they have liability insurance, that a suit does come on the city, and the city approved them, and they're out there in exposure. So I think we need to protect those people as well.
Okay. Thank you. Carol Kelly?
Mr. Mayor, before I... I've got one question for him.
Of course.
He mentioned the 10-day appointment with the doctor. Was that to do with the spay or neuter provision?
Let's see.
I see a 10-day requirement to file the appeal.
No, this is on... I folded them here. My methodology. Page on page B6, number 3, under 6.08.080. At the discretion of the Director, restrict the dog may be released to the owner and custodian if he or she signs a statement under penalty of perjury representing that the dog will be spayed or neutered and that he or she will submit a statement within 10 days signed by the veterinarian confirming that the dog has been spayed or neutered. I think there needs to be potential... At least if he submits that he's got a validated appointment, and he misses that appointment, that's a different issue.
Good point.
We can make an appointment for him, but we may not be able to accommodate... And I'm not talking about us, my practice only, but we're busy doing spays and neuters.
Okay, good.
Okay. Thank you.
Carol Kelly?
Mr. Mayor?
Good evening.
Council members? I need to go to Toastmasters. I'm a dog... I need to go to Toastmasters. I'm the dog trainer for the city of Lancaster, also for the High Desert Obedience Club. I coordinate the pet therapy program in the Animal Valley. We take the dogs to the hospitals. And I am also president of the Bark at the Park Committee. I am a certified dog trainer with the International Association of Canine Professionals, and I do have liability insurance. I want to thank Dave McEwen for meeting with the interested dog owners last December and listening to some of our recommendations. I know what he did was a huge job, and I feel he did a really good job rewriting the dangerous dog portion of the ordinance. My concerns lie with the mandatory spay and neuter of any dog resembling an American pit bull, terrier, or rottweiler. Mandatory spay and neuter does not address the issue of dangerous dogs. I agree that gang members need to be bothered and irritated and things taken away, and I think that you're doing a good job of that with the dangerous dog portion of this ordinance. I don't think that the spay and neuter part of it has anything to do with it. Sterilization procedures are major medical operations which may threaten the health, development, and temperament of dogs. No surgery is free of risks. The decision to subject an animal to such procedures should remain the responsibility of the owner and the veterinarian. Government mandates are an intrusion upon this relationship. There's no scientific proof that genetics cause a breed of dog to be aggressive, vicious, or dangerous. Irresponsible owners are to blame for the behavior of dogs. Breed-specific legislation is an injustice, as is genocide of a specific breed of dog. Breed-specific legislation fails to reduce the number of biting incidents for a number of reasons. The main reason is the basic premise is fatally flawed. It is a dog's upbringing that causes aggression, not its breed. So when one breed is banned or restricted, the responsible owners of that breed suffer the consequences and abide by the new restrictions, even though they've done nothing wrong. Whereas the irresponsible owners of those breeds will simply continue operating outside the law or move on to an unrestricted breed. Even those who feel restricting certain breeds is a reasonable course of action will admit what they're talking about are incidents involving mere fractions of a percentage of those dog breeds. It's similar to suggesting that since a handful of people of Arab descent have committed terrorist acts, all Arabs should be eliminated or their liberties severely restricted. Why target all pit bull types or rottweilers when only a tiny percentage of them are a danger? The answer one gives to that question is indicative of his or her level of understanding of genetics, canine behavior, and dog training. Isn't it much better to punish irresponsible dog owners who allow their dogs to behave inappropriately regardless of what breed of dog they own? Wouldn't that discourage irresponsible dog ownership regardless of the dog's breed? Isn't that kind of legislation more equal and make more sense? I've had the pleasure of speaking with three of our council members. I want to thank you for the time that you gave me. Personally, I feel that several of you have made up your own minds already. I don't think you have a lot of interest in hearing what we have to say. I feel your votes are already cast, and I sincerely hope that I am wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. You did great. AJ Listman?
Hi, I'm AJ Listman, 516 East Avenue, J-12.
If you pull down the microphones, we'll be able to hear you better, okay?
I can hear the echo from where I was.
Okay.
Anyway, I'm a dog owner, dog trainer. I've also applied to the AKC to become a Canine Good Citizen Evaluator. I compete with my own dogs in herding agility and obedience. I've rehabilitated aggressive dogs. I have a registered therapy dog. I almost bought her tonight, and I should have. She's a Pemmerock Welsh Corgi. One of my illustrations about the slippery slope we go on when we start restricting breeds is that about five years ago, Italy enacted a dangerous dog law, and they placed restrictions on 92 breeds of dogs, many of whom were included simply because they were bred to work or herd. The belief being that working dogs, especially herding dogs, had to be inherently aggressive to do the jobs for which they were bred. Pemmerock Welsh Corgi's a herding dog. It stands about 11 inches tall, weighs about 30 pounds. I have one, it's a registered therapy dog who visits the hospital, assisted living facilities, et cetera. In Italy, this dog would have been required to wear a muzzle at all times in public and never to be handled by anyone under the age of 18, under any circumstances, which meant that a junior handler couldn't show this dog in a regular dog show either. Okay, we're not in Italy, and we're not talking about 92 breeds, but when you start restricting, placing restrictions on dogs based on their genetics or appearances, it's a slippery slope, you know? What happens, as others have pointed out, if you... These gang members that you're trying to target decide to go move on to German Shepherds or Dobermans, you're going to restrict them, too?
If they move on to cats, I'm going to take their cats.
Okay, well, now, I really don't have a problem with dangerous dogs being restricted and limited and their owners being punished and/or fined. And I certainly don't have a problem with getting rid of gang bangers. The only problem is, when you're targeting something like a dog, you're targeting everybody who has those dogs, and that's not fair to the hobby breeders. That's not fair to the people I want to buy my next dog from. Putting ridiculous restrictions on them and taking away their ability to participate in a sport is really not fair. There are other ways to harass and target the people you're trying to target.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. How are we doing that? Go ahead and turn that off. How are we doing that? If we're saying that if you're a breeder, if you show the dog...
That's correct.
You don't have to spay or neuter the dog.
That's correct. However, you're putting a bunch of restrictions on these people in the manner in which they may raise their dogs.
I want you to know I was a junior dog handler, and I still have the trophy to prove it.
Great. Okay, but then, you know that most hobby breeders breed their dogs in their homes, they raise their dogs in their homes. The requirements in the county rules for having the unaltered dog licenses, you must have a kennel that's maintained outside the home. It has to have certain requirements. These people can't raise their dogs the way they want to raise their dogs. They have to pay higher fees to have their dogs, and it's just going to continue to escalate.
Well, I agree with you. I agree that people who are legitimate dog handlers and like to show their dogs and like to compete with their dogs, we shouldn't be making them spay and neuter their dogs. I totally agree with that. I mean, you know, I think that that is a recognized... I guess it's really not a sport, is it? It's a...
It's a sport. It's considered the sport of purebred dogs.
Okay.
I didn't count that.
And so how do I fix that? How do I accomplish what I want to accomplish and make it so that they can still engage in this, in some cases, a profession?
Well...
I mean, it's not a question that I don't want to listen and that I'm not open to persuasion. Tell me how to fix it.
I don't know how to fix it, but I do know that by the act of harassing one group of people that owns a particular type of dog, you wind up harassing any person that owns that particular type of dog by imposing restrictions on them as well, because you're imposing the restriction on the dog.
And I know that. And I know it's not fair, and I'm willing to bear the weight of it, as unfair as it is. And I really do want to be fair, but I can't in this situation, because the threat that is imposed by these people is just too great. So tell me how to give you what you want and still make it miserable for the gangs. And I'll be happy to work with you, but I haven't heard that yet.
Spaying and neutering their dogs isn't going to make a damn bit of difference to them. They'll just go out and get another dog. The dog doesn't have to be intact to be made to be vicious. They can take a spayed and neutered dog and turn it into a vicious dog as well.
Most of them are male dogs, and, you know, quite frankly, they do get real upset when you make them neuter their dog. I mean, it's a macho thing that offends them.
Well, maybe you ought to neuter them instead.
If I could, I would, believe me. If I could, I would.
Taking a dog out of the breeding...
Okay, so why don't we do this?
Do a thing to solve your gang problem.
Assuming that there are four people that are going to vote with me on this, what I'm open to do, or I guess I only need two people, right?
Do the thing to solve your gang problem.
Assuming that there are four people that are going to vote with me on this, what I'm open to do, or I guess I only need two people, right? What I'm open to is amending it later to make it so that the people you're talking about, who are breeders, who are engaged in the sport of showing these dogs and training these dogs, are unaffected.
So the only purpose that you have in spaying and neutering these dogs is to harass the dog's owners?
No, I didn't say that. What I said is that's my primary purpose. I also think that, you know, from what I do for a living, there isn't a month goes by I don't have some parent in there with a child who has been literally torn apart, and it's always by a pit bull. Always.
How did it happen?
Not always. What would we say? Eighty percent of the time, it's a pit bull. Eighty percent of the time, you know, I'm trying a case next month where the dog literally ripped off half of the infant, a year and a half, ripped off its face. They had to cut open its stomach and retrieve the ear in an attempt to put it back on, and it's always a pit bull. It's always a pit bull. But what I also recognize is that people who are in this sport and are dog handlers really love their dogs, and their dogs tend not to mis, I've just never seen them attack anybody. I just have never seen that in my experience. And so I'm willing to figure out a way that those people are unaffected, but you have to help me do that.
Well, another thing you need to do is consider education. Many attacks on children by dogs are brought on because the children don't know how to behave around strange dogs, they're not educated.
And I understand that, and I agree with that, but I'm not going to blame the child.
Then how about blaming the child's parents for letting their children run amok?
Well, we could have that debate all day. This is what I'm telling you, at least in regards...
Dogs that attack...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. You're getting something here, you want to take it. Assuming the ordinance passes today, as it's written, if you come up with a plan that is more fair to the people that are engaged in handling and breeding and training dogs, we will be happy to consider it, and we will be happy to amend the ordinance. What I'm saying to you is, I recognize the problem with this, and that's about, at least in regards to what I'm going to do, that's the best I can do for you. Okay? Thank you. Diana Beard-Williams?
Before she comes up, can I get one thing clarified, or just make a comment? Under the spade and neuter portion 6.08.030, unaltered restricted dog license and the requirements, there are exemptions, and the exemptions are: trained hunting dog whose owner provides proof of a valid hunting license, that's near and dear to me; number two, owner or custodian shall provide verification if an unaltered restricted dog is registered to the appropriate registry for the breed, AKC, UKC, or any other valid registry. I don't know anyone who shows dogs or raises them for sale where the dog isn't papered.
That's right.
That, I think, is what I'm going to hang my hat on. If I vote in favor of...
The way they're laughing at you, you might be wrong.
Well, then I'm going to look at this as a consumer protection issue. Why would you buy a dog that doesn't have papers? You have no proof that...
About a business license.
Ah, you've got to fill out a card, and you've already violated the PK Shaw rule. I just wanted to make sure we didn't go down a road of, oh, my poor registered dog, because we do have an exception for that.
Okay, well, that's my point. Oh, my poor registered dog. Excuse me, I have bronchitis, and I really came here tonight to talk about the PK rule. Some parents called me and wanted me to share some things with you, but I was moved because your ordinance is so complex, and it's so packed, and it's almost to the point that, for me hearing it for the first time, it's hard for me to digest a lot of what is in there. But my concerns have really been expressed by Dr. Bosma, I believe, and the woman who spoke before me, but I'm also somebody who, I don't breed dogs, I don't board dogs, but I've got a Yorkie. I've got a Yorkie that's got papers, okay? It was given to me because I performed a service. The person couldn't afford to pay me, and they paid me with a fifteen hundred dollar dog, or however much these Yorkies cost. I recently decided to breed my Yorkie. My Yorkie is about four years old, and my Yorkie is always, excuse the word, begins with an H, he's always hot. So people like my Yorkie. My concern as the person who's not a seller of an animal, a boarder, a greeter, it's, I don't have a business license, as this woman is suggesting, why are you going to make me neuter my Yorkie who doesn't do anything but sit in my lap and get hot from time to time and need a girlfriend? Why do I have to neuter him?
Why do you ask these things?
And why do I have to go and get a special license? That's what I'm saying. You're making me jump through all these hoops to protect him.
Our ordinance only applies to pit bulls and rottweilers.
But we're talking about being careful not to apply to all breeds, aren't we?
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm saying that, yes, it's unfair to the pit bulls, and it's unfair to the rottweilers, and we're going to bear the weight of it anyway.
Okay, because that's what I got, excuse me, then, I just sat there, and I thought about my little Yago with his little attitude, and I said, poor Yago isn't going under the knife for more than once. Okay, so excuse me for that. Yago is safe. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Have I told you today that I love this job? Okay. That's it. Now, any discussion?
Yes. Actually, I went through this ordinance, and my comments were great, it's fair, and to me, it wasn't too complex. I think it was very thoughtful, put together. Mr. McEwen, thank you very much for that. I found that, to me, it seems to have a sufficient appeal process if there's any questions, if there's any problems with someone's dog. The gentleman said something about, let's tweak it as we go, and that's probably something that we will have to do. I suggest that we have a list of pre-approved obedience handlers with certain requirements, if that's something that we can do. I guess the doctor mentioned that, specific handling, other than just getting the dog whisperer down here, probably every day. I agree with, there's no free bites anymore, and it does have to do with the level of damage that these dogs can do. Someone talked about a vicious Chihuahua. Well, you can kick a vicious Chihuahua out of the way. You can't kick a vicious rottweiler out of the way. Another reason that I'm really for this ordinance is that the citizens that really want these dogs are going to be required to be very responsible with them, and that's what we're looking for. And the last comment was, if, probably if it were left up to me, I'd probably go with a mandatory spade and neuter for animals, for dogs, and for cats, because there are far too many out there, and why is the county now talking about having to build a seventh animal shelter? It costs millions of dollars. So I feel this is very fair. So that's my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Mann?
Just one second, if we could. Please. Linda Cable said she turned in a card, and she didn't get a speaker, so maybe we can just look through there and see. How about that? This is Katie's.
I'm sorry, Linda Cable, I messed up. Come on down. I think Vice Mayor Smith hid your card.
That's okay.
Come on, man up.
My name's Linda Cable, and I have worked in the animal field, it seems like forever. I've worked for Dr. Bosma for almost twenty years, and before that, in different areas. I've done some dog obedience. I see a variety of breeds every day. I personally don't feel it's fair to segregate pit bulls and rottweilers. I would, there are several breeds that I would rather be in the room with a pit bull than several other breeds, just because of their traditional temperament. I see the lack of education on owners' parts. One of the big things we focus on at the clinic is to educate owners, not only in their health, welfare of their pet, but the behavioral aspects. We see people come in with a rottweiler puppy, and I immediately ask, have you ever had a rottweiler before? No. These are the things you need to be careful of, these are the things you need to learn to do and not to do. I don't think it's fair to punish the dog because you have an owner that is ignorant or an owner that doesn't want to learn to take care of their pets in the manner of which they should. I don't want to offend anybody, but we have a little bit of a joke nickname for Chihuahuas. We call them half-rat, half-piranha. Just because I can control it because it's only six, seven pounds doesn't mean it's not an aggressive, a vicious dog. Sometimes they are. Owners sometimes don't know how to. They don't see that behavior at home, so they don't think it is. They are carried everywhere, they're, you know, they don't allow them to walk anywhere, they're put in purses, whatever, and so, you know, they aren't taught what the rules are. When I did my dog obedience, the name of my class was Mind Your Manners. Just like children, I think all dogs need to learn manners. They need to learn to be taught what is good and what is not, what is appropriate and what is not. If you don't teach a child not to run out in the street and they get hit by a car, whose fault is it? If the dog is not taught, then it is not the dog's fault. Whether or not spaying and neutering everything is the answer, I don't know. It's a very complicated process that we've got going here. I think it's a good move in the right direction to get it under control. Animal control is way overloaded, way overloaded, with pets that are either turned in because people have behavioral problems and they don't know how to correct it, but they don't bother to call and ask. So I'm not sure exactly which is the best way to go. I just know that I see animals on a daily basis that need attention and care, and it's the owners that need to be taught. As far as your purebred dogs, I had a lady come in that said she had a labradoodle, a purebred. I said, no, ma'am, it's a half-lab and half-poodle. Therefore, it's not a purebred. We get multi-poos all the time. People will pay big bucks for these multi-poos, these labradoodles. So, there you go. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Mr. Mann, you were going to say something?
Yeah, I'm a little bit confused. You know, I have to go along with recs. I have some opinions about, unfortunately, about the gangs and the use of the pit bull and rottweiler, but tonight, there was a lot of concern, and my thought is, if the county currently has an ordinance that requires spade neutering, you know, I don't understand. We've been in the county, they obviously are taking care of the shelter here. You know, I can't see why we just don't open it up and make it where it's all breeds. Just, I get a sense of confusion here. I mean, like I said, obviously, we would target pit bulls and rottweilers in doing so. If you want to just harass them, I guess I could, I may maybe be arm-twisted to think that we ought to be specific with those two, but I just really think we ought to do all dogs and cats. That's my personal opinion. My two animals at home are microchipped, and one's female, one's a male, so spayed and neutered, so.
I wanted to microchip the kids, but Carol said I couldn't. Mr. Silvio?
This is almost two different issues we're looking at, but there's a lot of overlap. I think everyone up here and all of our speakers tonight have agreed that how this passes, how we're going to deal with potentially aggressive and definitely dangerous dogs. Everybody's on the same page with that, and everyone agrees with that. On that side of things, I share Dr. Bosma's concerns, the little and the big things, the ten days for an appointment, we may have to adjust that to make that feasible. Veterinary practices are busy, we may not be able to get a dog spayed or neutered within ten days, but that's a minor thing. We are going to have to look at how 10.37.130, Section E, is implemented. Dog must complete an approved obedience course. Those are legitimate concerns of obedience versus behavior modification. We need to make sure that those courses do what we intend them to do, which is change the behavior of the dog. That requires changing the dog and frequently changing the owner. I'll stay away from any Caesarisms. As well as appropriate certification of the trainers. That's not spelled in specifics in this section, but as we implement, I think that's something we need to keep an eye on to make sure that the dog and the owner are getting what they pay for and that it is effective. On the other side of it, on mandatory spade and neutering, I go back and forth with this. I look at how this is written, and I see adequate exceptions if you want to have a pit bull or you want to have a rottweiler. Part of me says, I don't like the government sticking their nose in somebody's business as to whether they have to spay their dog or not, but then I look out in society and I say, we've got too many cats, we've got too many dogs. I am loath to say, let's spay and neuter, let's just spay and neuter everything that walks. Very good, self-control, I like that. I like starting with pit bulls and rottweilers and saying, here's the exceptions on when you can have one that's not spayed and neutered. My personal feeling is, if we start to see another breed that's being used, then yes, we should go down that road with the appropriate exemptions. If your dog is papered, if there's legitimate use such as hunting, make sure those exceptions are in there. And I would err on the side of giving people a little bit of leeway. You know, is that a worthwhile cause to have an unspayed or unneuter dog? I'm going to err on the side of, let's give them a little slack, because I am nervous about the government telling you whether you're going to put a razor to your dog. Well, that's what it is. So I think, overall, this ordinance is a very good balance. It's not perfect. I don't think there is a perfect solution to this, and I think every city will come up with a slightly different version of this. I think with the conditions that we face, with the gangbangers that we have and the tool they like to use right now, which is pit bulls, I think this works. If conditions change in the future, I'm willing to look at it and change it, but with what we're up against and the conditions that we have and the resources that we have, I think this is a very reasonable compromise.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Smith?
You know, I'd like to thank the mayor for pushing this forward. I know this has been near and dear to his heart because of his business and what he has to deal with and what he's seen, so I know him coming on after his election, this was like one of the number-one things he wanted to get done. So I think we've gotten to that point, and we've been fair. I mean, for those out there that have said, you know, that it's not the breed, it's not genetics, it's the trainer, well, to some extent, true. You could train a little dog to be vicious, and you could train some bigger dogs to be nice, but to say that it's not genetic, you know, I don't know what all these people have been doing breeding dogs for certain tasks over these years, because this is exactly what they do. It breeds behavior. Genetics is behavioral science also. And once again, if I can bash the state of California, which I like to do once in a while, they've put in this position because they do not allow us to control vicious dogs this way, any other way, breed-specific, except neutering. So that's why we're doing it. This was their only tool, that we were allowed for breed-specific, to go after the gangsters through the state of California. And I agree with Councilman Silvio. You know, most people, if I had a pit bull that I wanted, and it was my lovey-dovey dog that I wanted to cuddle up with my kids every night, yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to neuter him. You bet, because it's going to make him less aggressive. And I think anybody who wants a family dog, they should do that. You got a group of people over here that want us to, including Councilman Mann, I don't want to spay and neuter all of them, but I think that's overreaching. I would like to add, if we could, or at least look at, you know, I think the four-foot leash, you know, that the trainer set was a good idea. I also like the sur...
I also like the certification, you know, I think that's in there already, that they have to be a certified trainer, but I like the idea of liability insurance, if they do hold liability insurance, because the city's mandated them doing it. I don't know what the other council members or city attorney says about that. I think that protects the city a little bit more. But I think it's great, and I think, as the mayor said, if we find, if somebody comes up with a better idea, that's nicer, that's more fair, and can bring it to the mayor, then we'll look at it. But I think this is a fantastic ordinance, very creative.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Smith. I'd like to entertain a motion with the change from six feet to four feet on the leash. And does somebody want to make the motion?
Do you want to change, put the addition for liability?
You want to look into that, Mr. Mayor?
I want to look into the liability insurance thing because I want to make certain that it's available.
Mr. Mayor, before you go on to that, let me just make a couple of additional comments. One, I would like to thank Kelvin Tinatango and Shelley Hansen for their assistance in getting all of the data together that I used in putting this together, and also coordinating with the various entities, with Animal Control and with the Citizens Group. Without their assistance, we wouldn't be sitting here tonight looking at this ordinance. We'd be a month, two months away. So I do want to acknowledge that. Second of all, with respect to the training obedience school, when we did meet with the group of dog owners in December, they raised this issue, and I asked that they produce a definition that we could use, and they did. But obviously, from the comments made tonight, not everybody that was at that meeting had an opportunity to have input into that definition. And so I would invite them to, anybody that has an interest in the definition of the obedience school definition, or the qualified school, or the training required for that, if they would submit language to us, we'll entertain an amendment at some point in the future. I think the gist of where we're going with this is there now, and it's sufficient for purposes of adoption tonight. The other, the six-foot to four-foot leash, I think is a good idea. It does require a substantial leash, so it's not, you know, something that can be broken, I wouldn't call a substantial leash. The other change that I mentioned earlier was the deletion of the fluorescent yellow collar. If we could take that out as well. And I don't, I think everything else was minor in nature. I saw a couple of typos that we'll correct.
So point of clarification, the licensed certified trainer and liability insurance?
I think we'll bring that back at a subsequent, for an amendment to this ordinance after this is adopted, but fairly soon. I wouldn't want to wait any particular amount of time. If we can get that in the next few weeks, we'll put it in and have it, and it can be adopted before this ordinance becomes effective, but it wouldn't, that amendment wouldn't be effective until sometime after.
Thank you.
With that being the case, I'll move that we adopt ordinance number 915 with all the amendments that the city attorney has stated.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote.
Oh. Mr. Mayor?
Unanimous. Yes, sir.
There was one other amendment that you suggested early on, and that was a deposit for the cost of the appeal.
Oh, that's right.
And housing of the dog.
Oh, great. How do I unwind this?
No, my motion was for all the changes that were stated by the attorney.
I think you'll need to back up.
We'll withdraw the motion and add that one, too.
We got Mr. Wilson in the room, for heaven's sakes. It'll be the...
So my motion is that we adopt ordinance 915 now.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We already approved it. What do we have to do?
It's a motion to reconsider with that additional amendment.
Okay, I'll move that we reconsider 915 with the addition that the city attorney stated.
Except that it's 914.
Okay, but how much? I'm sorry.
How much are we talking about?
914.
I think the way I'm going to draft it is that it's going to be a number to be determined based on a resolution adopted by the city.
Okay, fine. So that's the...
I'll second that.
Thank you. Now we go on to, you know, we've been at this for two and a half hours. What do you want? You guys want a break? You want to keep going?
Let's take a break.
And we have Attorney Dave McKeehan again. New business item two. And he's obviously not very prepared, is he?
I'm sorry.
You've got to put him in the doghouse.
MB2, you have a proposed ordinance before you that amends Chapter 2.34.010 of the municipal code to provide, to alter the eligibility requirements for members of the Architectural and Design Planning Commission, allows the appointment of individuals who reside within the Antelope Valley, not limited to the city of Lancaster, but also requires that they work within the city of Lancaster.
Thank you. Any speaker cards?
One question for Mr. McKeehan. Is that work or live within the city of Lancaster?
It's either, you can live within the city of Lancaster.
Or live within the Antelope Valley.
Or live within the Antelope Valley and work within the city of Lancaster.
That's what I thought.
And how do we define with, do we have a definition of Antelope Valley? I'm just thinking down the road.
You see, if it was the city of the Antelope Valley, we wouldn't have that problem, would we?
Or the county of...
Or the county of the Antelope Valley. Okay. Well, let me be clear on why I've asked the city attorney to do this. We have an opportunity to put an architect on the Architectural and Design Commission. He lives 1,000 feet outside the city limits, and so I'm amending the, I want to amend the ordinance, or I want all of us to amend the ordinance so we can put him on. I don't envision doing this again unless we have another opportunity to get somebody highly qualified. This way, we get a highly qualified architect, and we don't have to pay him. And in this economy, well, it's a good idea.
I think if I can make one comment on it, as we discussed this and we moved forward, the importance of having the person live within the Antelope Valley, because you could have somebody work here and they could live in Pasadena. And so the important thing that was put in here is so that they have a stake in this community, and as the mayor said, you know, maybe Antelope Valley City, but they have a stake in the Antelope Valley, and that's important. So I think it's a good, I think it's a good, it's a good way to get other resources.
Is there...
I move that we adopt ordinance now, ordinance number 915.
I'll second that motion.
Let's vote. It passes unanimously. The next item is the Lancaster Citizen of the Year?
Yes.
I guess I don't really have a motion on that, as though I'm just an announcement or...
You were asking people to submit emails of who they think should be Citizen of the Year.
It'll be the first Lancaster Citizen of the Year. My wife has graciously given $10,000 for that person to use for whatever they want, as long as it benefits the city of Lancaster. And when did we decide we were going to make this, make this election and then in the announcement?
We didn't get to the when.
Okay. So I'm throwing it up on the table to see what you guys think about it. We have a speaker card, so let's hear from that person first. Mr. Ortiz?
Mine has to be just like a non-agenda item? I mean, it doesn't have to be with that.
Oh, I see.
So you wrote CA101 by accident?
Okay, okay. You guys have any thoughts, concerns?
I think your wife is very generous.
Yes, she is.
So Rex, in keeping, you're thinking in terms of this just being reoccurring then, too?
Yes. I think we need to get people more involved, and we should start celebrating those who are. And, you know, we need to focus every day on reinforcing the idea that this is a community. So what I'd like is the application form to be put on the website for two weeks, and then we'll figure out how to select them, and then we'll do the announcement after that. Okay?
We'll get something on there tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thanks. The CA 101 will defer to the next meeting. And city manager, any announcements?
Just one quick announcement. We got a commendation from the United States Marine Corps. Our employees donated more toys for tots this year than they ever had before, six full boxes. But what I found interesting is that Toys for Tots in Southern California provided 19,000 children with toys for Christmas, and nationwide, they provide 7 million toys to 7 million underprivileged kids, and I didn't realize it was that large. So real proud of our employees for stepping up.
Thank you. And so are we. City clerk?
At this time, we would request any person who would like to address the redevelopment agency and city council on non-agendized matters to complete a speaker card. You will find the speaker cards on the back table of the council chambers. Additionally, we respectfully request that you fill the cards out completely and print as clearly as possible so that if necessary, the city council, city manager, or city staff will be able to contact you either by phone or mail. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you approach the podium, please notice there are three lights. The green light comes on when you begin, the yellow light will come on when you have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light will come on when your three lights, three minutes are up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure, we'll allow for a smooth and timely process for the city council redevelopment agency meeting, and we appreciate your cooperation. State law prohibits the city council and redevelopment agency from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Barbara Mizels?
Hi, how are you?
Oh, what do you got for me today?
I congratulate you. I agree with you on the dog issue. I think they should have a license if they have a bitch, because those are the ones that live in the house. The males seem to roam on all two legs or four. Anyhow, I welcome you and fell on book my humors, which wasn't funny. A lot has happened since I last spoke to you, and this is about corporate welfare versus indigent welfare, which is, of course, what I'm involved in, which, of course, is Section 8 and having caregivers given a fair pay for how they take care of me, because in the long run, this really helps the state, the county, and the city of Lancaster in the fact that I don't have to ask you as citizens to put out $5,000 or $6,000 a month for my care in a nursing home or a board and care. Let me live in home and take care of my dog, who's neutered, and my cat, who's neutered, and my son, who's available because he's 49. Now, the money spent about the aliens, and Michael Antonovich said that $1 billion in Los Angeles County has been spent on welfare given to aliens, and that's because you guys aren't the plumbers in Los Angeles County, each city being a plumber, including Mayor Ledford, who is plumbing them in. Anyhow, what it is is this: if there's a leak in the way that the foxes are giving out the money to the hens, then it's up to you to see to it...
You're mixing your metaphors.
I know this, but you get it, that you fix the plumbing. You don't tear down the house because the plumbing is bad. This is good for the people, and especially now in a depression and a recession. Now, that's for Michael Antonovich, whom I adore and thank him. Now, as far as George Runner, our senator, whom I respect and adore, his wife Sharon, that's why I have two hearing aids and you have one.
No, I got two, but I broke one.
All right. Okay. Anyhow, what he says is that abolishing the practice of paying to in-state aliens tuitions for aliens, he calls them illegal aliens. Let me explain something. Okay, you have an immigrant, period. He's not a legal immigrant. Of course, he's legal because he's an immigrant. He came in with papers, and he's got a visa. You have an alien who came in from God knows where, whatever country, Europe, Asia, whatever. That's an alien. If an immigrant pretends he's an alien in order to get college funding, then he's an illegal alien because he's really an immigrant. Now, if he's an alien pretending to be an immigrant, then he's an illegal immigrant, but don't confuse it. So what I'm asking you to do...
For heaven's sakes, we wouldn't want to be confused.
I know. Is see to it that whoever comes in and applies for a position who comes from a different country has something from ICE saying that he is an alien, saying in this college, because you see, the government says, "If you live here, you're a resident." Okay? So if you're a resident, then you're not an alien. But if you want an alien to, you know, so you could pay for your tuition in college, then you have to go to ICE, get a letter saying by them that you definitely are an alien, and let's see them if they put it forward.
I'm baffled.
You don't understand?
You baffled me.
I'm sorry. You went first.
What you're doing as a citizen is paying for aliens to go to the university for free, but you have to pay for your children. You have to pay for my granddaughter to go if she's on scholarship or grant. But an illegal alien, according to, gets it for nothing. I think you're called a loser. Okay? So that's that. Now, on the adult film industry, I've really been thinking about it, and though I believe in corporate welfare, I really cannot subscribe to giving them county, city, state funding for their plight. All I can say to them is suck it up, blow it out, and become typists. I thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Want one comment on that? I know what she's saying. In fact, Gil Sadio, who we used to call One Bill Gil to try to give illegal aliens a driver's license, when you look at the legislation that they actually put forward, and right now, if you are an illegal alien, you get residence tuition. So some guy who fought in Iraq, coming back here and decided to move to California, and he used to live in Nevada, has to pay out-of-state fees, which is exorbitant, but an illegal alien. Gil Sadio, and I actually read the legislation, and it says, "If you are an illegal alien but have graduated from one of our high schools, you will be eligible to the scholarships and the grants that the state gives you." Okay? But just to tell this lady, we should be getting a report, Mr. Bozignian, write an assessment at the end of January? Or is this going to be, I don't know when we're...
Yeah, the draft results of the audit are going to be at the end of January for the business license audit for employers who may employ folks that don't have green cards or that aren't allowed to work in the United States or aren't citizens.
That's correct. And so, Mr. Mayor, we'll be getting that soon. And so we're doing, the mayor's doing his part.
You got to get that from ICE. If they come in with a green card, I'm sure ICE will say, "Yes, they're, you know, here, you know, for the right to work." If they're not, see ya. By the way, that's your gangbangers. Pick up their kids, pick up their girlfriends, pick up the mama, the papa, and the grandma. Get them out. Ship them up. Heard them out.
Good night, Barbara.
Good night.
David Dyke.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Hello.
I've waited three hours listening to McLeese.
Yes.
My name is David Dyke. I live on East Side at 44029 Calston. And is there a representative from AV Press still here?
No. No, he left, but he listens to the tape.
How about Code Enforcement? Is there a representative for Code Enforcement here? Is there a representative for code enforcement here?
My wife and I had a yard sale last year, okay? Code enforcement confiscated one of my signs, because every evening we take our signs down because we don't like old yard sale signs. And I couldn't find one. I made it a game to find a sign, okay? And one or two weeks later, I got a letter from code enforcement that says that I was in violation of LMC seventeen eighteen dash one ten, signs in general. And there was just a warning letter, okay? Says if I did it again, I might get fined, okay? Now, there are other uninformed people out there that have signs up. They haven't been caught yet. I understand that. We have a limited amount of resources, okay? So I'm a good citizen, I comply. Then we found out after talking with code enforcement, the city hall several times, the only way to have a yard sale, advertise a yard sale legitimately, is through the AV Press. Now, I am assuming that the AV Press handshakes with the city government.
I wouldn't assume that.
Well, anyways, anyways, I would think so. I would assume so.
Now, with some of them, they do.
Last--
Okay.
If I heard a few things, I apologize.
That's okay.
Whoops. Last Saturday, the only way to have a yard sale, by the way, is to advertise to their paper, which is a forty-five dollar ad.
If that's true, I'm going to fix that.
Well--
Is that true?
Yes.
Go on.
Last Saturday, this nearly full-page ad came out on the Home and Garden section of the paper. It said, "Clean up with a yard sale." And in quotes, they say the last half of the sentence, "By spotting by the color site," I mean, a sale? Even if the California's against that, the state, because recognized the argument against the electronic billboards down in LA, the same applies here. And also, too, this is the advertiser, a free kit, a garage sale kit with their ad. We went down second time and asked them, told them that that was illegal. They proclaimed, give us that thing because maybe by the city, if they're advertising it, it's own classifieds. And it says here, in quotes, "Place the signs on posts or poles from the main street and in corners where customers need to turn so they can find your sale quickly." That's in direct opposition. I got upset. I came down--
Okay, Mr. Dyke, I want to do this. I want you, somebody from the city, before you leave tonight, will set up an appointment with you. They will meet with you. If all of your concerns are not answered to your satisfaction, then I will meet with you. Okay?
Who can I give this to?
Mr. Bozegian will tell you what to do.
Hey, will you please call me, sir?
My mother's been doing yard sales for years. We get to do yard sales. Right. Wouldn't everybody agree? Shouldn't we get to do yard sales? We do yard sales alone. Okay, Marguerite Ward. She was going to talk to us about chloramines. I agree with her. I don't want chloramines in my water either. Al Ortiz?
Sure, thank you very much. I would hate to be as well.
Okay.
My name's Al Ortiz. Address 42545 Wall Street here in Lancaster. Small business owner. Been out here in Antelope Valley for ten years. I appreciate City Lancaster for you guys offering these incentives for businesses to come out here to start a business and to thrive. My whole goal is to thrive here in City Lancaster, hiring employees from the city AV. I work with the workforce. I'm Max Duane, who's the head of Palmdale, and the one here in Lancaster, Linda. They've been working with me for the past year to help me build my business. I took money out of my resource of my house when the economy was well, put a hundred fifty thousand dollars out, because I believe in myself, believe in the business, what I'm doing here in the AV, that with the right people and the unity of people involved, that I'm going to help build my business up. So far, I've been let down, and that's why I'm bringing it up right here to the mayor, to the mayor and to the city, because I need some help. And I need someone to point the direction to me. Where do I start? So it might be you, sir. So right now, what I'm asking is, and right here where I started my business, the city had told me, come down here to Lancaster and we're having incentives for you to hire employees. Great. Well, one thing that they forgot to neglect, that they didn't have a program out here for us business owners, to make sure that we didn't have slum landlords. You're talking about gang members or slum landlords? They're just like gang members, thieves, but they have collars and ties. But they don't have the right facility to facilitate a business owner to hire people to come in, because I don't have the right air conditioning unit, I don't have the right heating unit, I don't even have the-- if you come and look, you would see and notice, how can you run a business like this? How can you hire employees? And I have like sixty recommended documents of employees coming, giving me resumes that I've hired, and they didn't stay, because I don't have, because no air conditioning, no heating, and I've been in this building for a year. I spent twenty-eight hundred fifty dollars a month just for the building, not everything else. I gave this owner over thirty grand, and I've now, and I've written him letters saying, please, help me, I'm a professional. If I succeed, you succeed. And this guy has totally walked over me. So now, what do I do? People say, well, go to a terminal. I'm just saying, the city should start a program to regulate some of these industrial business owners, to make sure that these small businesses are going to come in, take money out of their house, invest, and then not even have the right place to facilitate to hold new employees. So all, so me, I'm just, I have a lot of motion, because I spent a lot of money, time, building this business here in this community, to help this community, myself. And so all I'm asking is, where do I start? When can the program be, start for, to watch out for these owners that don't regulate the facility to house a business owner as myself? So pretty much what I'm asking for is Mayor--
You've got the meanest, toughest--
Man, I'm just saying, I just need some help. I want to succeed.
Code enforcement in anywhere in the country. And if somebody is leasing you a building without heat and cooling, and they're supposed to, we'll fix it, because Liz can fix anything.
I appreciate that.
And Mr. Bozegian will arrange to have you meet with them, and we will get on this.
I appreciate that, sir.
Thanks. David, I owe you a meeting, by the way. I've been trying to set that up, and if you would set that up with Jody before you leave--
I would like to sit down and go over that matter with you, okay?
Very good. I'm sorry, but I've been running all over the world, it seems like.
I understand. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, good evening, Happy New Year. I read a quote today in the paper that kind of made me happy. It started by saying that life is a dream to the wise, and I've been called a dreamer before. I know the proposal I've been trying to bring to you for the last four years is a bit reaching--
The Charter City thing?
Pardon me?
The Charter City idea?
No, 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 it's a human accountability project.
I want you to know, we're biting on that idea.
Yeah, no, no, we'll get there. We'll get there. But, no, when I met Larry first, four years ago, I gave him the human accountability project. He read it, and he said to me, he said that it reaches high, but if you set the bar too high, people won't jump. So I appreciated that input from him. I wrote a letter this week for the paper. I didn't get it in on time. It was the "Have Your Say About What You'd Like Your New Elected Officials To Say." And this is what I wrote. I wrote, "The historic national crisis we face is the result of the failure of leadership. The greed and the lack of vision created by that greed throughout the private sector and the breadth of government agencies and functions we rely on has put the world on the doorstep of social and financial meltdown. It only makes sense to start there to fix the problem. What we need is some sort of human accountability project for citizens, government, and law enforcement to undertake all simultaneously and immediately." And that's still here, what I'm trying to talk about tonight. I like to say that there's no greater joy than to love and respect the law, and we saw that here in our sense of community tonight. That's what people need. So as much as the gang bangers need to be stopped, some thing has to be done for them to bring them into the fold. We're having our entire U.S. military strategy changed, because we're realizing that you can't just go in and kick ass and take names and spread democracy. You have to help the people up. You have to build the roads, the schools, build that trust. We need to do that in our own country. So the challenges are great. So how can you fix that? That's what I spend my life dreaming about. And you've heard me say this before, I don't like to repeat myself, but I don't mind saying things that I like to say. Imagine if there was one fair and consistent thing in life, what that would do for us. We talk about all these intractable problems, and we'll make laws, and there was a philosopher who said that perhaps all laws are useless, because good men don't follow them, good men don't need them, and bad men don't follow them. So the crux of this program is to get us into the future with something that we can agree on. And that one simple thing is that we should all be better people by just driving more respectfully. My time is going to run out here in a minute. During the football games recently, I've seen some IBM commercials where they're bringing these traffic control systems online. They talk about the money saved, the man-hours wasted, the fuel, all of that. So traffic flow, what this program is about, is all built into that, you know? But I want to get back to that, because I think it's a real solution. And set up a time, what I would like to do is really just go through this in a way that can convey what I'm trying to say. And I can't stand talking over that buzzer, so I will talk to you later.
I'm turning it off, David. David, get with Jody. We'll set up a meeting.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Diane Brid Williams?
I come up here with love now that I know that Yago is safe. He will be in my arms as a whole man. Good evening. The reason I'm here is because, number one, I have two quick things to say, and I'm going to make sure I'm right on the money in terms of time. Number one, I would like you, and I think I've mentioned this to you before, great Mayor Paris, to check into AVTA for me. Some of the students who go down to CSUN are telling me that there is no student discount. And when I called over there, they told me there is no student discount. The ticket is two hundred--
Already did it.
You did?
You weren't here last, well, no, I did it before.
You did?
It wasn't at a meeting, was it?
No, you did it at a--
No.
Wait, wait, turn off the clock.
Turn the clock back. Vice Mayor Smith is on the AVTA, and he is taking care of that.
Yeah, I talked to Randy Floyd, who's our executive director.
Thank you.
And he's looking into it, you know, the commuter service.
Okay, great, because it's two sixty-five.
You'll have to understand, though, this--
Yes.
Is that the commuter service is not something that the AVTA is responsible for. Okay? They just do it as a favor, okay?
Sure.
And so there's actually, in fact, Mayor Ledford has actually brought up for us to discuss whether we should do commuter service at all, because we're not mandated to. We're mandated to give public service for this community, not to LA. And so, but I've asked Mr. Floyd to look into it, to see if we can get some kind of discount pass or something--
Because it's like two sixty-five for the kids a month.
Right. No, no, he's looking into it, and so we'll get--
Yeah. Thank you so much.
If we can't do it informally, I will do something formally. I think that is excellent. And what she's talking about is that we have a lot of kids going to CSUN down in Northridge, and they're having to pay two hundred and fifty dollars a month to take the bus there. I think we can do better than that, and so we're attempting to do that.
And CSUN said that they're the only ones that don't give some kind of student discount or help out.
And if we can't do it informally, I'll probably set up some kind of committee. I'll probably put you on it and some other people, and we'll do what we have to do to fix this, because I think that's outrageous.
Okay, and the other thing quickly I wanted to say had to do with the article above the fold today in the paper, you know, the PK one. I talked to a number of, as you know, parents call me, and what we were talking about is that it's not so much the lawsuit, as much as it is about what you have really put out there in terms of accountability and transparency and wanting to know what really goes on. And the only thing that I believe that the city of Palmdale did is something that a very gifted, talented lawyer, such as yourself, would have done, is to go through the back door in order to get the issue flushed out. They used PK Shaw. They used their technicality. And so what I'm hoping this board will do, since this seems to become, is going to become a bigger issue in this community, I don't want it to be part of the cactus curtain issue. Listening to the people who talked to me today, Lancaster versus Palmdale, it doesn't have to be that. It simply only has to be one agency who happens to be located, its president or whatever board in Lancaster, just being accountable, you know, to people in terms of how dollars were spent, nothing more, nothing less. And I would hope that you guys, since you seem to be very strong on that idea of not a cactus curtain and not having that kind of conflict, would, you know, encourage the citizens to realize, this isn't an us versus them thing. This is accountability and transparency issue, and that's all it is. And you're good at doing that, and I know you'll do it and do it well. And I'm in love with--
Are you saying you don't want me to fire any guns to the South?
I'm saying that even though Jim Ledford would probably never believe it, I am speaking up on his behalf, telling him, saying that he had nothing else to do but to exercise the fiduciary responsibility of making sure that his constituents believed that they were not misled, or that it was not a bait and switch, or that it was nothing unethical. And it clears everybody's name, but it doesn't have to be an us versus them thing. This is not Lancaster versus Palmdale. And I wouldn't know PK Shaw if we were in the Garden of Eden and there was Adam Eve and PK there. I wouldn't know who was who. Okay?
Thank you.
So I'm not defaming you, PK.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's it on the public comments. You know, there are a lot of people in this community that profit from Palmdale and Lancaster being at war with each other. It really is incumbent upon us to not say anything at times, because I really don't want to start up that battle between Lancaster and Palmdale, because I think it seriously damages everybody who lives here, except those few people who are able to profit from, you know, beating the war drums. That being said, I'm trying to stay really quiet over the whole college issue. However, that being said, I don't think Jackie Fisher is being treated fairly at all. It's a difficult issue. He made a difficult decision. People are going to disagree whenever you have difficult decisions to make, and to personally attack this man, I think, is truly outrageous. I don't have any qualms whatsoever about attacking the decision and attacking the process even, but to personalize this against Dr. Fisher is really reprehensible. And I understand there's a lot of people to the South that are upset that I've said that in the past. Let them be upset. That's just the way it is. Now, we have a report from Vice Mayor Smith on the Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll do CR1 and CR2 just sequentially here, real quick. Just in front of you, council members, there's a report that we didn't have done for last month, and this just gives you sort of an update. There's only one thing that I like to highlight, and that's the allocation of up to a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars of AV 2766 money, which is basically retrofitting some of the school buses, I think, which is good. By 2010, a lot of the buses and a lot of the diesel engines are going to have to be retrofitted. From the Transportation, Antelope Valley Transit Authority, the board, I've talked with Mr. Bozegian about this, and the board, it's something that I wanted them to look into, is we have a lot of capital invested in buses, and they're our buses. The agency, as you know, we pay the agency millions of dollars, the city of Palmdale does, and the county does, and as the agency, we hire a company called Veolia, and they run the buses and they run, and they also maintain them. My feeling is, is that they're our buses. If they're running them too hard, or they're just trying to get them out there so they can fulfill their contract, it's our buses. If they screw them up, we're going to have to pay for them. And the maintenance, so we're doing a study to see what it would be for AVTA to actually take over the maintenance part of that, because they're our buses, you know, and then we would pay the--
Do it.
There's not that many employees. There's always a problem with, you know, how large is the agents going to be? So that's one of the main highlights there. We appropriated funds to actually do a study, and we're going to come back and see what's going to be the best. And that's basically it, unless you have any other questions from the two reports.
I want those kids to be able to go to college in a manner that's affordable. Will you take care of that, please?
I'm working on it.
Thank you. Mr. Silio, you have a report on the Edwards Air Force Base restoration.
Nothing too exciting from the RAB. Some of the bases monitoring hydrology around the main flight line, given that over decades, the water level has dropped, and their concern is that, given that the state's not putting much water down the aqueduct, we'll be pumping more, and the problem of subsidence will continue to get worse, so they're monitoring that. The only other thing is that you thought the county and the state's rules were messed up. You ought to try the feds. Until the rules, the charter and the bylaws were changed, a member of the public could not come and give comment to the RAB. Now, you might like that, but it has disadvantages, but there's no, there was no public involvement. They actually had to pull a RAB member out of the meeting, talk to them, and then the RAB meeting member would have to bring up the issue, and that was just ridiculous. So that's in the process of being changed so that their format's now much, very similar to what we do as a council, that they just fill out a speaker's card and they can talk. It was, like I said, you involve the feds, and there's layer upon layer of bureaucracy to fix. That's about it.
Thank you. My turn. In my office, we spent the month doing employee evaluations, and everybody got evaluated. And it occurred to me that nobody's evaluating us. And so I would like an evaluation form to go onto the website, and the citizens can evaluate the council members and the mayor. And we will look at it and see what we can do better in that position. I'm not really interested in anybody telling me that I stink or that I'm great. I'd really like to know what I could do that would be better. And I assume that everybody would agree that that's something I should do, and I would also invite the council and whoever you think on the staff should do that in regards to me and anyone else. And we will take them seriously, and we will try to improve our performance next year based on that. So if we could get that on the website. I also read in the LA Times that the financial situation with our neighbor to the South is dire. If that is true, I would like the staff to look into, is there something we can do to assist them? If there's, if it really is a dire situation, is there some way we can help them avoid that? If a bankruptcy occurs, I would like us to be prepared to see if it in any way affects us and our ability to function. And again, if that is a realistic possibility, if the Times article is accurate, what can we do to help them avoid that? So if you would, I would assume everybody concurs that's something we should do.
Right, sure.
And so if you would do that, Mr. Bozegian, we would appreciate it. There's no closed session. Our next meeting will be January 27th at 5:00 PM. We went a month without a meeting, didn't we?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you want to show us a video?
Yes, we do. Is there any other-
Movies.
Did you want to-
Hey, hold on, everybody.
Did you want to take other council comment first, and we end with the video, or?
I thought we already did that.
Oh, I didn't know. Did I miss council comments? Somebody have a comment?
Good.
Okay, we're good?
Okay.
Okay, good.
This video, well, while Kelvin's queuing it up, it was originally, because we got so many requests for the musical road footage on it and stuff, but what we decided to do was use this to tout Lancaster, as a reason to tout Lancaster. This was done by a local company, so we did buy local.
Ask any longtime resident what gives Lancaster, California, its innovative edge, and they'll point to the city's rich aerospace technology heritage, a heritage which includes testing of the B-2 stealth bomber, the F-117A stealth fighter, the SR-71 Blackbird, and the U-2. In fact, it's not uncommon to look into Lancaster's clear blue sky and see one, two, or even three of these beautiful aircraft flying at the same time.
Given the strong heritage, it's easy to appreciate the latest advancements the city has made in technological and lifestyle innovations, including going green at the new solar energy plant developed by E-Solar.
This new solar energy plant incorporates E-Solar's unique modular and scalable solution to deliver cost-competitive solar energy in response to ever-increasing worldwide energy demands, demands which include a recently announced power purchase agreement with Southern California Edison to produce 245 megawatts of solar thermal power.
The E-Solar power plant utilizes small mirrors, or heliostats, which track the sun with high precision and reflect the sunlight to a tower-mounted thermal receiver. The focused heat boils water in the thermal receiver, producing enough steam to power a traditional turbine and generate solar electricity. Once complete, this site will utilize 24,000 heliostats.
The new solar field layout minimizes installation time and cost. Minimal skilled labor is required to build the solar field, allowing for greater efficiencies. E-Solar regards Lancaster as an emerging hub in the green energy sector. This Sierra demonstration facility will deliver five megawatts of clean, renewable electricity to the grid, enough to power about 5,000 homes.
This will be E-Solar's flagship location, complete with a visitor center to introduce this cutting-edge technology to business prospects from around the world. The center will welcome foreign dignitaries and educate future generations about renewable energy, solar power, and specifically solar thermal solutions.
Once complete, the Sierra demonstration facility will be the first operating solar power tower plant in the nation, and only the second in the world.
Technological innovations are just some of the changes taking place throughout the Another innovative and fun development, which has become quite a tourist attraction, is the nation's first and only musical road located right here in Lancaster.
The musical road was initially installed as part of a Honda Motor Company marketing campaign designed to play the William Tell Overture when driven upon.
Whoa, this is awesome.
The original road was repaved shortly after the commercial was shot due to traffic concerns arising out of its immediate overwhelming popularity.
But then the unexpected happened. The road reappeared, this time constructed by the city, a full two miles from the nearest
Some friends of ours in LA told us about this musical road up here in Lancaster. We decided to come check it out. It was amazing. The technology is incredible.
It was cool. Let's go again.
Okay.
So once again, the musical road is attracting new visitors to Lancaster. Not only is the road fun and entertaining, but it's a unique engineering feat, bringing a new source of pride to the community. Another seamless marriage between technology and lifestyle design can be found here at Lancaster's Arbor Court. A more than 300-unit facility located within Lancaster's downtown area, Arbor Court defines a new standard for senior housing.
The recent transformation of the popular 50,000-square-foot Essex House Hotel by the Insight Development and Housing Corporation of America has resulted in a campus offering a variety of impressive amenities at a monthly cost affordable to most seniors.
One such amenity is E-Court, which incorporates a 90-station touchscreen learning environment. Here, residents engage in brain games such as Scrabble, Sudoku, and puzzles, activities which are proven to keep mature minds sharp and active, and all while having a ton of fun.
The complex also houses a 10,000-square-foot healthcare facility, offering occupational therapy, speech therapy, and other rehabilitation options.
We wanted to keep it affordable to people who are on fixed income. So for $800 a month, we wanted to create a place that will provide everything that they need to survive, to live, including food.
Arbor Court also provides an arts and crafts room, sewing and quilt room, and fully-equipped pottery room.
We wanted to create a place that seniors don't have to leave.
Part of the community concept includes Arbor Court Mall. Here, seniors will have a supermarket, discount hair salon, massage parlor, coffee and juice bar, as well as access to AV Bridge Club.
We're going to open up a shop that they will be able to sell their sewing stuff and their pottery and different Christmas items that we're going to create, all of it going back to self-sustain this property, so we don't have to charge anymore. We're going to have a garden, and our garden, the Chamber Commerce is supporting and they've given us a donation.
Lancaster's progressive approach to changing the fabric of its community continues with current designs to renovate the downtown area with restaurants, businesses, public parks, and facilities.
Such renovations include artist lofts and a new lifestyle restaurant where patrons can socialize between tables using state-of-the-art touchscreen technology.
Once complete, these new artist lofts will offer an affordable work-live environment for artists, ushering in a new era of downtown arts and culture.
This 21-unit loft complex will bring a unique urban space to the downtown area. Each 1,600-square-foot two-story unit will have four bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a common kitchen area. There will also be 2,000 square feet of indoor-outdoor gallery space for local artists to proudly display their works. These developments are all just part of the new wave of growth here in Lancaster.
So just as Lancaster continues to be a pivotal player in the aerospace industry, it is also transforming itself into a leader in the latest technological and lifestyle
The economic security that these different industries are bringing into the Valley are going to be truly revolutionary. Right now, we have thousands of people having to drive down to Los Angeles and drive back every day, three, four, sometimes five hours a day on the road, just to support their families. In a short period of time, and what I mean by that is four or five years, we will have the industry in place here in its non-polluting industry that will be able to provide those people with the jobs right here. Look at the quality of life change that's going to create. We are on the tip of a wave that is going to ride us into, or drive us into, economic Good job.
Thank you. That will be on the, it is on the website, I believe, already as of today, and it'll also be on our local cable channel as well.
Great. Economic development, going to use it in there?
Absolutely. We'll also be sending it out to our email lists and such.
Okay. Joe, that was great work. So let's do one now on the winning athletic teams. I'm serious, I mean, let's not let this one go by. That, I mean, that is really huge, what we're creating in this city. Let's celebrate it, okay? Thank you very much. Thank you, folks. It was fun. See you on the 27th.